The December 4th, 2013 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for hearing impaired. Please note some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Wednesday, the meeting at 8:00 p.m., Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete/submit to the city clerk up front here, please. Cards are available online, the clerk's office, or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come forward to the city clerk's staff up front for assistance. If you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, will everyone please rise? We will have a moment of silent prayer for all those who are serving our country, and for those who are in need, and for our families, and all those who are with us today. And thank you very much, and then we'll proceed on with the pledge. Thank you, we'll proceed with the pledge. Thank you, and now on to our ceremonial agenda. All that excitement was because our wonderful Director of Communications broke his foot, and so he has a scooter. But this David Riegelman, who's been with us forever and just wonderful, but he also has crutches. And when I came in, and because I'm married to the greatest better in the world, Oscar Goodman, I saw an opportunity for a bet. We have a gentleman in the back who has some crutches there. So the question is, could we race across City Council here? You know, I'm gonna put my money, and I don't know you, but I would tell you I'm gonna put my money on you. Okay. I hope you're okay, sorry. Okay, and David, we know you will repair well, because we love, he does have a scooter with a little baggie, he's young, his bones are strong, so it was a Thanksgiving, or close to Thanksgiving, break. Anyway, for our first item, mayor pro tem. Anthony, tis yours.
Thank you, mayor. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
How you doing? Good? That was a good one. Gives me a great pleasure this morning to recognize two brothers as the December 2013 City of Las Vegas Citizens of the Month for their accomplishments in youth development and fostering the musical arts in Las Vegas. I'd like to recognize Jeffrey and David Skousen, who are the directors of the Zion Youth Symphony and Chorus. So David and Jeffrey, would you mind coming up here? Give them a nice round of applause. Okay, so as I go through this, this is David, and this is Jeffrey, so keep them, I want to make sure we keep them in order. The brothers were raised by a father who sang and played guitar, and a mother who budgeted for a grand piano before she budgeted for new living room furniture. Determined to have musicians, their mother also religiously supervised her seven children's piano practice sessions. David and Jeffrey Skousen were destined for a lifetime of musical pursuits. Fortunately, many of those pursuits have placed the brothers side-by-side, giving them opportunities to collaborate, opportunities they both count among the highlights of their careers. David is the pianist, David is right here, and Jeffrey's a singer, began performing together as kids. After leaving home, they were paired up again when during their final months of their LDS missions in Chile, they performed and traveled the country together extensively. Jeffrey went on to graduate from Brigham Young University with a Bachelor's in International Relations and a Master's in Education, all the while studying with several renowned voice teachers. He first came to Las Vegas as a fifth-grade teacher in the Clark County School District before opening his own vocal studio, where he trains hundreds of students nationally and internationally. An expert in the field of vocal function, structure, and development, he frequently guest lectures at universities, colleges, and vocal seminaries throughout the world. Jeffrey is also the CEO of the Institute for Vocal Advancement. In this capacity, he travels extensively, including countries such as Great Britain, Italy, France, Poland, Australia, Thailand, Japan, Korea, and Brazil, just to name a few. He teaches both private lessons and master classes. You can also find Jeffrey in the recording studio producing projects for his vocal stars around the world. His wife Becky, where's Becky? There's Becky over there, and their four children, Elizabeth, Madeline, Andrew, and Joshua, are some of his greatest fans. David, to my right, received his Bachelor's of Music and Piano Performance from the California State University at Long Beach, and his Master's of Music and Orchestra Conducting from Brigham Young University. As a Broadway conductor and pianist, he conducted the first national tour of the Broadway musical Chicago, and was the musical director of the hit off-Broadway show Secrets Every Smart Traveler Should Know. His regional credits include Children of Eden, Merrily We Roll Along, The Fantastics, Sweeney Todd, and West Side Story. As a pianist, he has premiered several new works for solo piano and piano and voice. In 2004, he moved from New York to Las Vegas and opened a piano studio where he teaches hundreds of students from all over the valley. David and his wife Tara Harpist often perform concerts together. They are the proud parents of three children, Luisa, Daniel, and Catherine, who all play the violin. In 2002, Jeffrey agreed to conduct the Boulder City-based Red Mountain Choir. After years of performing solo, Jeffrey brought David out from New York to accompany a concert, and their brother act was reborn. David continued to commute across the country to accompany subsequent performances until he and his family moved to Las Vegas in 2004. Jeffrey and David served side-by-side as artistic director and musical director of the Red Mountain Music Company for four years, heading up dozens of performances in Boulder City and in Las Vegas. In 2010, the brothers agreed to collaborate once again as music directors of the Zion Youth Symphony and Chorus, a local group of talented young musicians from the Las Vegas Valley between the ages of 12 and 18. With David conducting up the symphony and Jeffrey heading up the chorus, it was a match made in heaven. Together, the brothers elevated the organization to a new level, preparing them to perform at the Smith Center when it opened in the spring of 2010. Having just celebrated their 10th anniversary, Zion Youth Symphony and Chorus has been performing there ever since to sold-out crowds. As you can see from the video clip, we're about to show, the brothers work in tandem with Jeffrey simultaneously conducting the choir of approximately 200 singers, and David conducting a full orchestra. Jeffrey and David keep in perfect sync with the help of a small video monitor. I've attended several of their shows, the latest one in early November was a patriotic-themed performance to commemorate Veterans Day. So let's watch the video. That actually doesn't give it justice. I mean, you should be in the Smith Center with a sold-out crowd, and those 200 kids singing, and a full orchestra with Jeffrey and David conducting. It is absolutely amazing, and it is perfect. And for them to volunteer to take these kids to that level of talent is absolutely amazing. And because of them, because of all that you've done, I've decided that on behalf of the mayor, and myself, and the entire City Council, I would like to present to you Jeffrey and David Skousen as the December 2013 City of Las Vegas Citizens of the Month. Congratulations. And with that, you get presented a certificate. Thank you, mayor. And also, over here, we're gonna have in front of City Hall the Citizen of the Month street sign for the entire month of December with Jeffrey and David Skousen's name on it. So congratulations, and I would like each of you to talk a little bit about your kids.
Well, first of all, we're delighted, thank you, mayor, for having us here on City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. We've been doing this for about almost 40 years together, 38 years we've been performing together, and this is truly the pinnacle of our experience. We've had just a wonderful, wonderful time. We have great kids, amazing kids. As you know, there's a lot of lack of arts in the schools these days, and it's a great opportunity for these kids to get out and do high-quality performances, not only with their instruments and their voices, but in the Smith Center, which is, of course, one of the finest auditoriums that's ever been built, I believe. So we've just had a wonderful time. We have a wonderful board, that David's gonna introduce a few of them for you.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman and the council, thank you so much. This is unsought-after and really appreciated. Of course, we're standing in front of 280 kids, but we don't make a sound, and we just wave our arms and look impressive. But the board, and the people who really do the work, there's over 100 people who do all the work that really counts, and we'd like to recognize a few of them. First of all, I want to recognize Terilyn and Jenny. Terilyn Taylor, Jenny Jackson, can you stand up? I hate to make you do that. These are the two who had the vision, what is it, over 10 years ago? And they have beat the single submission for a decade. And without that vision, and without that support, and just how wonderful you are, we wouldn't be here. Certainly, our wives, Becky, you met Becky, and Tara, my wife, who is also a harpist with the Philharmonic, but we won't mention that. Anyway, they support us, and they allow us to take the time to dedicate to these kids. On our board, certainly Terilyn and Jenny, Mr. Bruce Bain and Pecoli Ranch family, thank you so much for your support. He's kind of in charge of our fundraising. Smith Center is not free, and we appreciate that. The people who run our individual organizations, Jody Osborne, and Christine Christensen, can you stand up, Jody and Christine? These are the people, thank you. These are the ladies who make the kids do what they need to do, and that is a huge job. Finally, Aron Lidle. Aron, can you stand? He runs our website, and he's also has been from the beginning with us. Thanks, Aron. I hope I didn't forget anybody. Anyway, thank you so much, we are glad to do this. Oh, and the Boy Scout. This is Jody's kid, Tanner. Tanner, stand up. Yay, Tanner. Thanks for being here. Did you get out of school for this? Just checking, thank you.
All right, congratulations, and why don't we come over here and let's get a picture taken with everyone? Anybody who wants to come down and participate in the picture, come on down.
For our next item, I have the pleasure of presenting an award to an outstanding group of city employees. The Action Team Award recognizes a team of employees who strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. In 2009, the City of Las Vegas was awarded a Department of Justice grant for the prevention of copper wiring theft through the hiring of additional deputy city marshals. Just as the grant was awarded, the amount of copper wiring theft incidents dropped in our city, and the grant team worked with the federal government to extend the grant and look for other ways to spend the funds. During this process, copper wiring theft began to increase as the economy continued to slow. The team then revised the grant scope, received approval from the federal government, and mobilized staff across the city to use the funds quickly to implement theft prevention measures instead of hiring additional marshals. The quick turnaround and massive workload threatened the city's ability to meet the federal grant requirements, but this team was able to meet the obligations to the benefit of the city's taxpayers. The grant was $400,000 with a $426,000 city match. The city judiciously used the funds to reduce access to the city's copper wire storage area, increased security at the West Yard, secure covers of more than 10,000 street light poles, and materials to secure additional light poles throughout the city. The team worked across the department lines to ensure that the funding was spent in a very reasonable manner. I'd like to ask the team members to join us at the podium as I call out your names. LeAnn Lee, Steve Martin, Erin Wells, Holly Jensen. I don't hear anything. Come forward. There's nobody here. Please, come forward. How come you're shy, first off? Come on down. Do I have to start the list again? Where are you, LeAnn? She's probably upstairs. Now she's embarrassed, because she's not here. Steve Martin, Erin Wells, Holly Jensen, Neil Rodler, Mike Perry, Jerry Walker, Chris Warwick, Bernard Camo Jr., Tom Asbell, Rebecca Whitlock, Brad Schmidtler, Brian Day, Everett Scott, Greg Knapp, Herb Tyler, James Chadwick, Jason Amenadger, pardon me if I am doing something terrible to your names, Jay Johnson, John Vreck, Kevin Marsh, Mark Ridley, John Meyer, Rex Branham, Rodney Hall, Todd Engert, Troy Parham, William Whitwer, Rick Baird, Michael Dunn, Mike McGill, William Hutchinson, Candace Buford, Teresa Boyce, Matt Planer, Brian Golden, Pat Patton, Patrick, that is, not Pat, Doug Towner, Patty Berganza, Penny Towers, Tim Shattler, and Priscilla Wodeyak. What a great group, and we do thank each and every one of you. How fabulous. Congratulations and thank you. And I know if you have copper, anybody with arthritis, I know copper, if you found any extras, very good to prevent arthritis. Do you have little bracelets? I think you deserve it out of that grant. But we thank you all for the time, energy, and effort you put into this, and hopefully, and you see with this fluorescent green, Betsy Fretwell, are you still here? Do you see this green, this fluorescent green? This is what we'd like to have put on our crosswalks. Sorry. But congratulations, we really appreciate all that you've been doing all this time. You're great, and we wish you the happiest of holidays, and a safe and happy New Year. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, did we want to get everybody together? Too late. No, they like it. We like pictures, now that everybody has a camera and their cellphone. All right, wait, one sec, we're coming in there. Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna be on my tippy toes, because I'm... I can get down here, but I can't get back up. Thank you. I'm getting a charlie horse, hurry. Good. Thank you again. Thank you. Oh my gosh, I am so sorry. Our city clerk said you weren't here. Okay. Oh, they've all left. I was supposed to ask Penny to say a few words, but we said enough. So we appreciate them, really appreciate them. Now, before we have our final item, I do want to mention, believe it or not, the city will finally be launching our new free, I love free, Wi-Fi network downtown on Thursday night, tomorrow night, December 5th. Sign up to be part of our social media scavenger hunt, which will start at the Art Bar at the Downtown Grand at 6:00 p.m. That's at the Art Bar at the Downtown Grand on Third and Stewart, or on Fourth Street. Teams of two to six people may test their downtown Las Vegas knowledge. I know Councilmen Barlow and Coffin have a start there, because they've been here so long. All proceeds will benefit the Animal Foundation. LV.net will offer a dollar donation, up to $500, to the Animal Foundation every time the #DTWiFi hashtag is used throughout the event. So let's do that. Awesome. And then, for our final item, Councilman Coffin's going to recognize an individual who does so much for the community every single year. Councilman.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you very much. Today, we're here, as our final item of business, to recognize Chet Buchanan for his commitment to excellence and community service for the City of Las Vegas. All the people really benefit from Chet Buchanan's work. Chet, would you please come up to the podium and bring Amy with you? Yeah. If you don't, come on, Amy, you're part of this deal, unless you want to give that camera to somebody else.
And he's without his warm clothes, I want to see.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Also joining Chet today in the audience is Jerry McKenna, Senior Vice President and Marketing Manager for Kalak, and I know he's proud of his guy here who carries the flag all over town. Chet can be seen everywhere in Las Vegas. Now, let's remember, you've been to a Rebel game, and you've seen a Madcap character running around with a microphone, awarding pizzas, or honoring people, or giving away prizes, and leading cheers. That's Chet. If you watch the games on TV, or you hear them on radio, you're gonna hear his voice somewhere or another in the audience, getting people crazy. That's what Chet does. But it's not all. Six months ago, I attended the luau, it's the annual luau of the Help of Southern Nevada, which is a charity that my wife's been part of for nearly 40 years, and Chet was the emcee. And that's when I found out that he does so many, many more things for our community besides cheering on Rebels of all kinds. And I thought, well, I had to know more about him. So he's been a frequent contributor to CNN Headline News, he's a guest host on Fox 5's More Access, he's hosted the Miss USA and Miss Universe presentation shows, Amy, watch him, as well as Miss Teen USA. He's also well-regarded for the annual Candlelighters 5K Race for Our Kids, Fighting Against Childhood Cancer. Chet's raised well in excess of $3 million for various causes, and was proudly installed as a member recently of the Candlelighters Board of Trustees. Chet is the host and creator of Kalak, that's 98.5 for y'all, for free ads, Chet Buchanan and the Morning Zoo, since 1999, consistently one of the top-rated and most fun radio shows in town. Chet and the Morning Zoo, or Chet Buchanan and the Morning Zoo, is best known for his annual toy drive, and that's where this day becomes important. Chet benefits Help of Southern Nevada and numerous other charities by climbing to the top of a 30-foot scaffold. Now, you might have heard about this or seen it on TV. He'll go up there, and he'll stay up there night and day for 12 days to raise money for kids. I think last year, he raised enough money for several thousand bicycles. Let's watch a short video on the toy drive from last year to get you ready for today.
Why are you up there?
It's a Las Vegas holiday tradition, the 14th Annual 98.5 KLUC Chet Buchanan and the Morning Zoo Toy Drive.
I just appreciate what you did for me and my family when I was hitting hard times, and this is my chance to give back to you, brother, I appreciate that.
Monty, God bless you, man.
Merry Christmas.
Andre Agassi, welcome to Toy Drive.
What's up, Chet?
What's up, buddy?
Oh, you're a legend, man. This is awesome.
Walmart Sam's Club Truck Number 9, Anthony Woods from Centennial Toyota, shut it down!
Truck Number 11, shut it down!
Shut it down!
Okay, two years ago was 136, am I right?
Yes.
Last year, 171.
171.
And this year, in 2012.
172.
$172,000 in toys! Walmart Sam's Club Truck Number 18, let's shut it down! Look at it! 114 bikes from Toward Market.
We brought down 35 bikes today.
Another 35 bikes? Woo! Another 35 bikes! We open up that truck, and once again, Sherri, what's inside that truck?
70 bikes, children's bikes.
We got 147 bikes for you.
Whoa! 147 bikes!
How many bikes, Anthony?
Yeah. 250 bikes.
What you got in the truck, lady?
We would love to donate another 200 bikes to Toy Drive this year.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present Chet Buchanan to the City of Las Vegas. Chet, say a few words.
First of all, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I said it online, I said it on the air this morning, I'm never any good, you can't tear up, because then I tear up, and I'm never any good watching the video, that really, this is, this is so much for everyone who brings a single bike, or a toy, or a gift card to Toy Drive, and all the people who've been so generous, not just for Toy Drive, but the variety of causes throughout the year, and I'm just here to pick up the award. This is, this is really for everybody. From Jerry, on down to our program director, Kat Thomas, who in 1999, I'd just come to Las Vegas from Seattle, and obviously, we kind of wanted to do something to make a splash. You know, you do want to do that, you want people to know who you are, but ever since I was a little kid, I always thought it would be great, I grew up in Seattle, and I always thought there was a, there was a grassy area, kind of in the shadow of the Space Needle, and I always thought it would be cool to live on top of something, and raise $10,000 for charity. That was, I thought, when I, from when I was a little kid, I thought that would be amazing. And so I kind of threw that idea at Kat, and he said, "Let's go with it." And for it to now turn into 18 53-foot trucks full of toys, 3,280 bikes, and $268,000 in cash and gift cards, which, those were the numbers last year, for a grand total of, Jerry, Jerry said, "We need to put pen to paper and figure out how much this is worth." So we figured it was, last year was, was over $2 million worth for kids right here in Southern Nevada, and for a 14-year total last year of over $12 million. So, it's, it's phenomenal. You may have seen the, you may have seen the weather report. Toy Drive starts tomorrow. So, West Sahara, just west of Jones at Envy Energy, whoever's watching, any of you here, one toy, one bike, one gift card, we've got big numbers to try and, to try and break from last year, and we'll do everything we can. I have always said that I'm just the guy showing where to go. It's everybody else who does it. I should also recognize Joyce, we call her Juicy, she was an intern, she won a contest to be an intern on my show, she's now our Promotions and Marketing Coordinator, Manager, Director, whatever, she just does all the work, and if there's anybody who's as passionate about Toy Drive as I am, it's her. And not coincidentally, I lost my mom a few years ago, today's her birthday.
Thank you, Chet. She is proud of you. Don't leave the podium. I don't have the proclamation with me, but I, I just want to say again, reiterate, the weather started today, if all of you noticed, the temperatures dropped about 30 degrees, and it's not going to get better until Saturday afternoon, and it's perfect baptism of ice for Chet. He shaved everything, especially for this event today. I want to know, are you going to be able to shave while you're up there on the tower? There'll be, there'll be no shaving, and no trips down for events. He is going to be there for the duration, for all 12 days. So, if you're driving by Nevada Power on West Sahara, anytime, day or night, be sure to honk your horn, wake him up. It might be called Envy Energy, but I'm sticking with Power. That's his roost until, oh, what, the 16th of December, and let's hope this year that the citizens of Las Vegas will all pitch in and bring more. Brand-new toys, and certainly bicycles, and maybe even gently-used bicycles, who knows? I don't know if you allow that, but I would take one if I was a kid today. Also, Chet, we have some people that are working in an event in conjunction with your fundraiser. We have Councilman Beers, Councilwoman Tarkanian are also chipping in on Saturday with a special bicycling-related event, so I'd like Bob and Lois to stand up and say a couple of words here on this issue.
I'm actually a longtime KLUC fan, I don't know if you know that, Chet, but, what, 1982, or 3, or 4, or 5, or 6 or so, I was part of the KLUC Morning Show, right after you got there, or before, I think. Anyway, on Saturday morning, we're going to be kicking off a bike ride from the transfer station out on West Cliff and Durango. I'm going to ride a bike, leading the troops down to where you're going to be at, Envy Energy, and we will be the first to wake you up when, when we arrive, if you manage to drift off into sleep in your first 15 minutes up in your perch.
And we're going to have hot chocolate and candy canes, can we get any of that up to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, because we feel it's going to be pretty cold, and you'll be colder than we. So, I just wanted to say, Chet, I thank you so much, not just for this, what you do, but for everything you do. You're there all the time when someone needs help, and I just want you to know how greatly appreciated it is to the community, and I hope everybody goes to the bike. If you don't ride a bike, just show up at Nevada Energy and get your chocolate and candy cane.
Yeah, and I was just checking the time, I don't remember what time we kick off the bike ride from West Cliff, I think it's 10, oh, 7? So 7 o'clock, join us at 7, and you'll see me about 10, it's going to take me longer to ride my bike than everybody else, but, but join us early Saturday morning for a wonderful bike ride for a good cause.
Wait a minute, is it 7 or 8?
Oh, is it 8?
Maybe there's a special, maybe there's a special start time for those of us over 40. 8 o'clock.
I'm going to be there regardless.
And although we've joked about the cold, it is not a laughing matter in Las Vegas, sudden change in temperatures like this, it's called a hard freeze by the weather surface. Out at the exit to the building, or the floor here today, if you would be so kind as to pick up one of these, which our award office and the council are providing to people, these are 7-foot-by-8-foot illuminated body warmers, they're astronaut-tested, and in this package could be a life, and I want you not to leave it in your car. When you take it with you, we'll give you some more, we'll give you some more. No, I'm going to give you some more to take with you. No, you're taking them, and you're going to toss them down to somebody that doesn't look like they've got enough money to have a place to sleep. It's a very important thing for us. We've, we're opening up shelters, and we anticipate having a full house before too long. Thank you again, and this proclamation, which says everything we've said, Chet, I know you would like to hear it read again and again, but you and Amy can just do that tonight on your last night together for a while, and we appreciate truly all the service that you both give us. Thank you.
Beautiful. We'll be by. Thank you. Oh yes, let's do it. Right there, you'll be in the middle. We'll do if you'll be in the middle. I may have we got 1, 2, 3, 4. Let's go over to the far side, if we could. And Councilman Coffin, I think you will conclude this for us, please.
Okay. Okay, my aide Felipe has a little bag full of the warmer, warming blankets, so when people leave, pick one or two, or whatever you think you need. You saw, you probably saw somebody on the way today, sleeping on a sidewalk or in the shadow of a building. Give it to them, don't be shy. Sometimes they're too shy to seek public assistance. To conclude our commemorations today, our Chaplain of the Day, Sandy Marks, has come, and he will be closing this part of our agenda with our prayer. If you'd please come forward, Mr. Marks, Reverend.
Thank you, Chaplain. Thank you very much. Would you please rise and join me in prayer any way that you feel is appropriate? God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together this day to take on the important tasks before us. We ask for your hand in blessing this gathering, and for guidance and directions, so that our actions are based in wisdom and in the spirit of community service. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals. We ask these things in your holy name, and thus we say, amen. And we'll continue right on with City Council. Slowly walking. We are on Agenda Item Number 8, is that correct, City Clerk? Thank you, since I've had fingers that are having trouble. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We will set the time at 1:00. And for those of you who submitted cards, I have the name of Holly, it looks like Stabersky, and Karen Lane, and what, they are both on Agenda Item 23. So if you are one of those two ladies, please state your name, that's fine, go right ahead, state your name for the record. So you get a red light. There you go.
Yay!
And then two of you would let us know which item you're addressing, that would be helpful.
My name's Melissa Letourneau, and I just was wondering on Item 26, if you guys will allow questions on that item, when it comes up? If I have any, sorry.
We certainly, certainly could.
Okay.
Did you, City Clerk, did you get her name? Could you spell your last name, please? And it's Melissa?
Yes.
And it's Item 26?
Yes.
Okay. So Mayor Protem, would you please note that, too, so I don't slip by? Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name, and...
My name is Anthony Hargis. On the Public Works 18, can you pull that later?
Okay.
And I just want to say good morning, and have a good day.
Thank you, you too. So number 18, you'd like to pull forward. Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, you called a couple of names, Tim Shattler, Deputy Chief, City of Las Vegas, Detention Enforcement, two of the people we invited here to talk about the span neuter ordinance, so they're going to come up after that item, if that's okay?
That's absolutely fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll close this portion and move on to Agenda Item 9, Business Items for Possible Action, and the items that council, staff, and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two items. Item Number 36, SUP 48035, applicant, Hookah Masters Lounge, Charleston Marketplace, 5900, West Boulevard, Suite 8. Staff has asked that to be stricken. And Item Number 37, ROC 50663, applicant Lamar, Central Outdoor Owner, Masonic Memorial Temple Lodge at 2234 West Mesquite. The applicant has asked that be, to be withdrawn without prejudice, and that is my motion.
Thank you. There's motion, please vote. And please post. Do you want to make your disclosure now? Okay, that motion, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that motion carries, thank you very much. We now go on to Agenda Item Number 10. Possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the regular Possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the regular City Council meeting of October sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Is there a motion to approve those minutes, Mayor Protem?
Move for approval.
Thank you, there's motion. Please vote and please post. That motion carries, thank you very much. Councilman Beers, Councilman...
On our consent agenda is an item that provides funding for the Helderato Parade. That parade is, I'm sorry, the Helderato Rodeo.
Could you tell us that item, please? And I think Councilman Ross is with you?
That is Item Number Eleven.
Okay.
The Elks Lodge is closely associated with Helderato and has been throughout the history of our city. And I, for one, am a member of the Elks Lodge. I believe a couple of other of our council members are as well. I don't believe that there's a conflict of interest here that would require me to not vote but merely to disclose that that potential conflict exists. I think we're okay because I will accrue no benefit from this vote. Council can jump in.
No, I agree. I think that if the council members were board members, it would be a different story. But merely being a member of the organization is not an impediment to voting.
Thank you, Mr. Sherbit. And Councilman Ross?
And Mayor, with your permission, I too would disclose that I'm a member of the Elks Lodge and a big, strong supporter of Helderato. Whoa, yeah!
Okay. Thank you very much. That's it. All right, so we will now move on to Agenda Number Eleven. Items eleven through twenty-two, wrong. We've been asked to pull forward Agenda Item Number Eighteen, which we will do. So items eleven through twenty-two, with the exception of Number Eighteen, which will be pulled forward on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by their departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Councilman Beers?
I would like to make a comment about one of the consent items before we vote.
Okay.
I will be supporting it if this is the time.
I think this is a good time before we do vote on that.
On Agenda Item Fourteen, that's our pet licensing system, and I just wanted to make a couple of notes because I've received comments from constituents that are annoyed that they appear to be doing business with an out-of-state entity when they comply with our animal regulations and get a license. And so at the, I think everyone in the city has gotten these complaints, and so we put this contract out to bid. And it was a pretty square process, we just didn't have any local bidders. In fact, we're continuing with the same vendor because they were the low bidder on our rebidding. And I just wanted to kind of proactively address the frustration that people have when it appears that they're doing business with an outside vendor. These people specialize in a very small, narrow niche in their town. And that's, they just offer the service at a lot better deal. Before we hired these people, we were spending about, I don't know, a hundred and fifty thousand a year to get less than a hundred thousand dollars a year revenue. Now we've turned it over to them, we get a check out of the deal and a lot, a lot better handle on our four-legged population.
Thank you, I think that's really important. And I don't know, can that be up on the website? Somewhere, the explanation is there? I think it's really important because we are getting calls, and I think they need to know why, that there were no local bidders and that the savings. It's really important, I think, you know, because the constituent needs to be able to, now that we have this wonderful way to communicate with the population, I think it's really important. So if you would do that, I'm asking staff. Thank you, Councilman Beers. Okay, so there we are. And so again, just to repeat, eleven through twenty-two, pulling forward Number Eighteen, are recommended to be approved.
That will be my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. That motion, I can't say it till it's up. That motion carries. We'll now go to Agenda Number Eighteen. Mr. Hodges, would you come back up? Please.
On Eighteen, the question was, you pronounce the street Wallopai? Wallopai, whatever. Okay. That, that street, is it kind of like, like in the county and the city, like down the middle, the one side is the city and the one down the other side is the county, or what? Is the street split down the middle?
Sarah, did you want, Councilman Ross, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the Mayor, Mr. Hodges, yes, that is correct. Half of Wallopai is, portions of that sector are in the county, and several portions of that sector are part of the city. But I'm glad you brought it forward so we could highlight Mayor and council members. This is the long-awaited construction and widening project at the 215 in Wallopai that the folks at Providence have been dealing with for, for quite some time. There's a three-way stop sign at Wallopai and Deer Springs, and it's an absolute bottleneck. So fortunately, with Jorge, Mr. Cervantes' help and Clark County's help, we finally got to that point where we've got the funding, we're moving forward with the project, and the folks up there will be relieved. So thank you, Mayor and Council.
And if I might, Mr. Cervantes, would you come up? I think it's really important that you address it so it's really clarified, not that it wasn't clear from you, Councilman Ross.
Good morning, Jorge Cervantes, for the record. The Councilman is correct, this portion of Wallopai has a portion in the county, a portion in the city. We're part of the county in this project where we're widening to allow four lanes in, in both directions. There's a lot of congestion in the morning and the afternoons. As part of the agreement, we're managing the, the project, we're providing the pavement. The county's building the two traffic signals coming off of the 215 interchange and a new signal at Deer Springs and Wallopai.
And could you, do you have an estimation of the finalization of the project, time-wise?
Upon award of this, Mayor, we'll go ahead and issue the notice to proceed probably in about a month. We've got to get the contract signed between us and the contractors, we've got to have a pre-construction meeting. So probably in about a month, we'll start. The portion near Centennial High School is going to be done during the Christmas break to minimize the impact to that school, and the rest of it will start right after that.
Thank you. Mr. Hodges, does that answer your question on this matter, please?
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem, could I have a motion on Agenda Item Eighteen, please?
Move for approval.
There's a motion, please vote and please post. Thank you, Councilman Ross, that's important to get at there. And that motion carries, and we will now move on to Agenda Item Twenty-Three and, right. Report to satisfy the annual requirement under Ordinance 6067 regarding spaying, neutering of certain animals. This is in reference to all wards. And I see Mr. Shattler's here, Chief. Please go forward.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Tim Shattler, again, City Las Vegas Department of Detention Enforcement, Deputy Chief. I'd like to recognize a few people in the audience, just real quick, that are here for this ordinance as well. Karen Lane from the Las Vegas Valley Humane Society, Holly Stoberski from Heaven Can Wait, our partners at North Las Vegas Animal Control, and Christine Robinson from the Animal Foundation, who I'd like to call up because she's going to speak as well. If you remember, we came to this ordinance in two thousand and nine, November. It went into effect after a grace period of five months in April of two thousand and ten. So this is our third annual report in. And what I can say is that this is a long-term project. We've been, we mentioned that when we first talked about the ordinance. It's not something that's going to happen over months, but really over years. Three years into it, we can say we have made some progress on this. And I'm going to point out just two things that are in your backup materials, and I'm going to turn it over to Chris. The first one, and things that I think are indications that the ordinance are indeed working, is that since the ordinance went into, into effect, we've seen an approximate seventeen percent increase in the number of animals that our animal control officers pick up. Okay, so they pick up fifty-five thousand animals since this ordinance went into effect. So forty-five percent of those animals have been spayed and neutered. Over, which is, now this is going before the ordinance, only twenty-eight percent of those animals were spayed and neutered. So that's a seventeen percent increase during that timeframe since the ordinance went into effect. The other one I'd like to point out is, we have what we call is owner turn-in. So if one of our constituents in the City of Las Vegas goes down to the Animal Foundation, they turn in their animal, that's an owner turn-in. So what we've seen there is, we had a yearly average of about twenty-five percent of those animals being spayed and neutered prior to the ordinance. Since the ordinance, we're at thirty-eight percent, which is about a twenty-four percent increase. So we're seeing the ordinance has had an impact on it. It's, like I said, going to take many years for us really to see the full realization of it, but we are seeing strides in the, in the, or increasing the number of our, of our spayed and neutered animals.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. So good morning.
Chris, thanks, Chris.
To push on the little button to red lights.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Christine Robinson. I am the Executive Director of the Animal Foundation, which of course provides sheltering services to three different jurisdictions, including the City of Las Vegas. I'd like to expound a little bit on what Deputy Chief Shattler said in his presentation and talk about the very real impacts of spay and neuter and the ordinance on this community. In two thousand and eleven, the Animal Foundation saw, now keep in mind, this went into effect in two thousand and ten. In two thousand and eleven, the Animal Foundation saw a two-point-four percent reduction in the number of animals brought to our facility by animal control officers. And now I'm not talking about who was spayed or neutered, I'm just talking about the raw number of intakes. Two thousand and eleven, a two-point-four percent reduction. In two point, in two thousand and twelve, that number dropped by an additional nine-point-six percent. And thus far, in two thousand and thirteen, it looks like we're going to see an additional four-point-eight percent reduction. And while there's many variables that contribute to all animal shelter statistics, we believe that the significant reduction is certainly in large part due to the implementation of the spay and neuter ordinances, as we've never before seen any reductions like this in our past. Now this is where this really gets good, is when we talk about what that means. When we can bring even slightly, when we can, a nine-point-six and a four-point-eight percent reduction, and that's certainly beyond slightly, less animals into our facility, and when we can continue to place more animals in what we call positive placements, so return-to-owner, adoption, placed with our rescue partners, all of which is happening, then we have room. And when, maybe it's not much room, but even just a little bit of room means that we have not had to euthanize a single animal for strictly space purposes in more than thirteen months, meaning the animal was otherwise healthy and adoptable, but we simply didn't have room for them. Now I want to be clear about this next part because I know that there's been a lot of misunderstanding out in our community right now. That does not mean that we are finished, and it does not mean that we are no longer euthanizing animals. Sadly, we must still euthanize thirty-three percent of the dogs that come into our facility and seventy-three percent of the cats that come into our facility. What it does mean is that because we're not euthanizing...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, what was the number on cats?
Seventy-three percent. We bring in about the same number of dogs and cats, but we adopt out so many more dogs than cats. What it does mean is that because we're not currently euthanizing for space reasons alone, we're now able to do what we in our community have dreamed of for years, and that is begin to treat animals with minor medical and behavioral conditions, which we would otherwise not have been able to treat in the past when we still had a space euthanasia list. But now we can do that and prepare some of those animals for adoptions, and so it, it means that we're dipping further into those euthanasia numbers, and we're continuing to bring our euthanasia numbers down. And while we have a long way to go, I want to leave you with these numbers. In two thousand and seven, and again, I tie most, if not much, of this to the implementation and enforcement of these ordinances, these spay and neuter ordinances, and lots of other work by a lot of other people, some of whom are here today. In two thousand and eleven, we saw a five-point-two percent reduction in euthanasia. Two thousand and twelve, that number decreased by additional thirteen percent. And in two thousand and thirteen, we are looking thus far to see a twenty-two percent reduction in the euthanasia of dogs and cats entering our facility. Is it enough? No way. Is it huge progress? Absolutely. There's no question in my mind that the work with our local government partners and many other partners in the community, and most certainly the implementation of the spay and neuter ordinance across the valley, is making a difference in the lives of our communities' lost, homeless, neglected, and abused animals. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great presentation, which I'm sure is up on your website. Those data?
The numbers are.
Yes, I mean, so that the progress can be seen in areas both?
Yes.
Okay, I see blinking on my left here?
And on your right.
Okay, everyone, now, Councilwoman, let's go with you, then Councilman Coffin.
I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. We are making significant process in lowering the euthanasia rate, but we still are euthanizing seventy-six percent of the cats and thirty, seventy-three percent of the cats and thirty-three percent of the dogs?
Correct. And that number is significantly down, unfortunately. I mean, it's still a high number, it's not unfortunate that it's down.
Yeah, that's a lot. And are you sending dogs to Canada?
We are.
Good.
Guess you read your paper.
Yes, and I will tell you, that's wonderful when I heard that.
Yeah.
They don't like the big dogs, though evidently, it's the littler, smaller dogs.
The small ones, and, and a special interest in Chihuahuas.
Yeah, that's wonderful that you're able to do that as part of that program.
Eleven hundred thus far.
Eleven hundred.
Since the program started. We work with another outfit, Fuppy is an organization here in town, and we've sent more than eleven thou, did I say eleven thousand? I meant eleven hundred small animals, mostly Chihuahuas, up to, it's the equivalent of our Petsmart.
Right.
That company works with us.
Homes where they're wanted. It's, it's really such a good thing to have as an addition to what else we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, this is a special thing here. Mary and I have taken advantage of various organizations that orbit around the foundation. For example, Heaven Can Wait is one, and then we've also, just in the last week, received great service from the organization at Lead because we did our second round of spay-neuter return, well, trap-neuter return in our neighborhood. I think four years ago, we trapped a dozen cats and had them spayed and neutered at the Heaven Can Wait, which is a wonderful organization staffed by volunteers who then, once, at least once a month, get a clinic going, and local veterinarians and their staffs come and donate their time to neuter all these little animals, which then become, they're feral anyway, to be sure. Most of them are not adoptable. But when they go back out in the wild, they've got an ear clip, and it's sometimes real short, sometimes it's just a nibble, I think depending on how pretty the animal is. And they go back out there, and they do not reproduce anymore. And that's the key, is, is if you don't want to kill an animal, and I know some people do, because some person's cute furry pet is another person's scourge and pest. And yet, if people understand, and I think those who are watching this broadcast would remember, that if one of them is bothering them, they can have it trapped and moved. But if they have a clip on their ear, they should know that they are going to not reproduce, there won't be any more little kittens. Now, it took us a year to trap the female, the mother of the colony that's out near us, a year. In that period of time, she had three litters. Those three litters could, I'll tell you what, you're the expert, how many animals, how many cats can come out of one female in the course of, say, a year or two?
Oh.
What is the progeny? What is the equation?
Does, does lots count? I don't know the equation.
It's thousands. It's thousands. The progeny become thousands. And that is something that people have to consider. Well, they don't live very long in the wild. They probably live a little longer if they've been spayed and neutered. And they are generally harmless, and you can adopt them out there, don't bring them in. Right now, we just, we just trapped another twelve, including two pets from other people we released, and one that we had trapped four years ago, a real darling cat, but it's out in the wild, it prefers that life. And yet, we still have three kittens and the mother, the, what do you want to call it, patient zero in an epidemic or something like that, the mother of all. We finally got her. We got her last week, and you, you, your team spayed her, neutered her, I always lose track, on Friday. And she is still in the house because we think that, while she's pretty wild, those three little kittens, and they're only, you know, maybe eight inches in length, they're small still, and they're clustered around her. We've kept them in the house, especially during this cold spell, to help them recover from the surgery. But this, this is an adoptable trio. And so if anybody's interested in the audience or would like to know how to contact me to have a shot at adopting these little pets, they will never give birth to any others, so they're free in that regard. But they ought to stay together. I believe siblings should stay together. I don't believe in breaking them up. They're more fun this way. And so call my office at 229-4623.
If this, this elected official business doesn't work out for you, I've, I've got some work.
Well, I'm pleased to help. I think you do a wonderful job. Thanks for your report.
Thank you, Councilman, and Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Robinson, this is a far cry from two thousand and nine, when I introduced this ordinance to change the way the City of Las... the way the city of Las Vegas deals with these issues in neutering and spaying as a requirement by law to do so in the city. This wasn't this building, it was the other building, and our chambers were full of people who cared on both sides of the aisle. It was quite a moving meeting, for those of you that missed it. I know Councilwoman was here at that time and remembers that meeting, it was very challenging. But I see numbers of success, and I think that's significant. You know, you mentioned, you gave us some percentages of dogs and cats that are, that have to be euthanized for one reason or another. You know, that's never going to go away until there is responsible pet ownership in the city and every jurisdiction in Southern Nevada dealing with this issue. It's not going to go away until people take care of their pets, and they get them spayed, and they get them neutered, unless they're breeders, and that's a whole different category. I want to say this, and Tim, your team's doing a great job out there, you already know that. But Ms. Robinson, I want to commend your efforts, and the efforts of your staff and all of those folks that you're involved with, dealing with this harsh reality of life in the city. No one likes the thought of euthanizing an animal. No one likes that. But it's a reality of life. And since you've taken over the Animal Foundation, you have done an incredible job there. And I want to, I just want to personally thank you, on behalf of all those dogs and cats and other animals and reptiles and things that you're dealing with over there, thank you for what you're doing for this community. I can't thank you enough. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I think we all echo your thoughts, Councilman Ross and everybody up here. I just know, because you and I have chatted about it, and the phone calls that I've had, you know, were it possible that you would not have to euthanize. But the reality is, you don't have the physical space, you don't have enough vets, you don't have enough staff, you don't have enough of everything that would be absolutely needed so that you wouldn't have to put down any animal. And so, it's, as always with everything, it's about the dollars that are there, that are available. And you are doing a phenomenal job, and we are so grateful to you. I do have two cards here, one from Karen Lane, and Holly, I'd love you to come up, because you both had so diligently filled these out, and we give you permission. Don't go too far, don't go too far. Please come forward, and do, again, state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, Council. Holly Strabisky, Vice President, Heaven Can Wait Animal Society.
Good morning. And your name, please?
Karen Lane, Las Vegas Valley Humane Society.
Thank you. Good morning.
First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for their understanding, thorough understanding, especially Council Coffin, for what the problem in Las Vegas is, having to do with the overpopulation of the animals and the organization's efforts throughout the community, including with LEED, to try to reduce this significant number of turn-ins and the euthanasia rate. While we're all very excited about what has been happening and the numbers getting reduced, I find myself here, as I was last year, bringing up the issue of funding for the organizations that deal with this issue on a day-to-day basis. In order to maintain and continue the success rate of the spay and neuter laws that are having in the city, the organizations that are responsible and are actively involved every day with providing the citizens of Las Vegas with low-cost and no-cost spay and neuters, especially when it comes to the feral animals, are in desperate need of funding. I stood before you here last year and provided you with some numbers. In 2011, Heaven Can Wait, along with C5 and Las Vegas Valley Humane Society, in 2011, we did 3,482 feral and owned animals for the city of Las Vegas at no cost or low cost. In 2012, we did 3,441 dogs and cats for the citizens of the city of Las Vegas at no cost or low cost. In 2013, so far, we have done over 3,500 cats and 583 dogs, for a total of 4,148 cats and dogs at no cost or low cost for the citizens of Las Vegas. Yet, we receive no funding from the city of Las Vegas. Sooner or later, the well of our donors and volunteers is going to run dry. From the county, and I've mentioned this to you before, we receive approximately $120,000 a year, and we're committed to doing 5,600 cats and dogs for the county at no cost. City of Henderson has provided us with several acres of land in exchange for our efforts that we do in providing them with free, no-cost, low-cost spay and neuter of their animals. But again, from the city of Las Vegas, we've not received any funding that can help us to continue our efforts to do this. We, of course, want to continue to provide every person in the city of Las Vegas with spay and neuter services at no cost or minimum cost. Just as an example, Clark County gives us approximately $21 to spay and neuter an animal. It costs us about $65 to spay and neuter an animal. So, we're operating $40 in the hole for every animal. And that money has to come from our donors, volunteers, and again, in these tough economic times, it's really difficult to keep going to the same donors and saying, can you make up the difference? Last year, Mayor Goodman, you suggested that we meet with the city of Las Vegas, different agencies and animal control, to try to come up with some ideas on how we can raise some funding to help organizations like Heaven Can Wait and Las Vegas Valley Humane Society to continue to offer free services to the public. And we did. And Ms. Karen Lane is here to provide you with an update as to how far those efforts got us.
Thank you for your report. Thank you. Good morning.
Once again, Karen Lane. Karen Lane with the Las Vegas Valley Humane Society. I realize that you have had some personnel changes this year. We have been a little frustrated because we have not been able to move things along. We're not, I just want to point out this to you, we're not asking for a donation. We believe that there are changes to the ordinances, and we've presented those, that can be done, that will move this issue forward. I think, as Chris Robinson has pointed out, we're getting there. I mean, I can't tell you, we, Heaven Can Wait, working with C5 and the Las Vegas Valley Humane Society, spayed and neutered 25,000 feral cats in the last three years. I mean, we are working on this problem. I think the Animal Foundation is now looking at some other ways. We are not stopping, and I think that we can move forward. And I would say to Councilwoman Tartanian, yes, they put down 74 percent of the cats, but the issue is, fewer and fewer cats are going into the shelter, and that's the way we're going to stop this problem. And I think that's really important, through TNR, because if that cat is spayed and neutered, and hopefully, it goes in that trap, that's as far as it goes, it's released, because it shouldn't go anywhere else. Those are the things that we're looking at now. If that animal's spayed and neutered, then it should be immediately released. So, we're looking at some of these issues, but funding is a critical issue for us. We think that people who haven't spayed and neutered their animal, and it goes into the Animal Foundation, should pay more than the typical impound. That's what happens at Clark County, and we are seeing a larger percentage decrease in impounds in Clark County right now, and I think that impound issue is part of that. We can also look at licensing fees. But I think the two issues, you've got the stray cat population, I think we're dealing with that issue, we've really reduced those numbers substantially through both the spay and neuter ordinance and the TNR ordinance that you implemented last year. And I think the other issue that we have to deal with is the dog issue, which is a totally different demographic. I'm looking forward to animal control, I think, you know, hopefully, as they can rebuild their complement of officers, that we can do stronger enforcement. I can tell you right now, we offer spay and, free spay and neuters to people who will not take us up on that, who will simply will not spay and neuter their animals. So, you know, this is our level of frustration. We think that with funding and some tweaking of the ordinances, that we can keep moving, and we really would appreciate your support in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have some questions and comments from Council. Mayor Protem Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, what typically happens to these owners that you run across that have not spayed or neutered their dogs and cats? Are they getting cited, or arrested, or?
They get cited. It's a civil violation. We changed it to civil violations back in July of 2012. We went civil with many of our animal control violations. So, it goes before a civil hearings master. And if they come in with their animal spayed and neutered, which generally they do after they've been cited, then the hearings master can reduce the fine that they would have to pay otherwise.
So, they're automatically brought before a hearing master?
Or they could pay it if they want. So, they can either choose to go before the hearings master, or they could just pay the full fine if they wanted to pay the full fine, and forego the hearings master process.
Okay. And everybody has to go through that, that you come across that has not spayed or neutered their animal?
Yes.
Okay. And, I just had a question for Christine. And, so, I know, I mean, this is great news, and like Councilman Ross mentioned, when we first got into this, it was very emotional. I mean, we had lots of people showing up for the meetings, and we went back and forth, and I, and we finally came up with, I think, a good ordinance, and obviously, it's working. But what, just so I kind of, I know euthanasia is a last resort, obviously, and what is the, what are the reasons why a dog or cat are euthanized? They just, nobody wants to adopt them, and how long do you keep them for?
That's a complex and not single answer. There is no time limit. By law, the animal's there for three days, where it is still owned by the city of Las Vegas. At the end of a three-day stay, and the goal there, of course, is the owner comes looking for them. That happens about 11 percent of the time, less than 2 percent for cats, by the way. At the end of the three days, the animal is outcombed, if you will, in one way or another. If the animal is healthy and behaviorally sound, the animal moves to adoptions, and there is no time limit there. Again, it has to do with space. We're moving 118 animals every day of the year into the facility. So, the animal can stay until we don't have space for the animal to stay, and then, you know, we start looking at things like working with our rescue partners. This is all in an effort to keep from euthanizing for space. And so, they can be outcombed, if you will, in a number of different ways. What was the other part of the question? What happens to them?
Well, that, I mean, that's basically what I wanted to know, is what, I mean, obviously, you do everything you can to make sure you don't euthanize one of these animals, and...
Yes. And thank you for bringing up what I would think would be an obvious point, but it seems it isn't. And that is, there's not a single person in our facility that would choose to euthanize an animal over another alternative. Nobody. It happens, and it happens because you're exactly right. There's, we don't, we run out of possibilities. We run out of possibilities.
And...
And we're still bringing in 118 every single day.
And are there other things that we can do, as a city council, or as a city, to help reduce that number even further?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I love what these two are talking about in terms of a, an ordinance modification to allow us to do different things with the cat overpopulation. You know, I, it's a, it's a big paradigm shift, but I like it, and that is, let's get them spayed and neutered, and let's not bring them in. There's, why, you know, I heard somebody say, a doctor, a veterinarian that I work with in Madison, Wisconsin, she said to me once, why do we round up wild cats and bring them to the shelter just to euthanize them? We don't do that with squirrels. And I thought, I mean, that was a light bulb for me. I thought, you know, she's right, I don't know why we do that, because that's exactly what happens to them. If they're feral cats and they come to my place, they're getting euthanized. I can't adopt them, I can't rescue them. That's what's going to happen to them. So, let's figure out a way to not let that happen in the first place. And yes, there's lots of ways to get that done.
Okay. So, we need to continue this discussion?
Absolutely.
And how are you doing for volunteers there?
Outstanding. We love our volunteers, more than 1,000. We always need more.
You have plenty of them, or you need more?
More, always more.
Always more.
More, more, more.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to add to that, knowing that one of the neighborhoods in town, near where I live, was in undated, first had a couple of pet rabbits, and then was in undated by huge numbers. Cats are not far behind, and in our neighborhood, when you have a feral cat, and it is not spayed, and it does produce, à la Councilman Coffin, those young babies grow up very quickly, move into heat, and then reproduce. So, it is a never-ending cycle, that all we can do is plead to the public to have the cats picked up and brought in, because they reproduce like rabbits so quickly, and in such large number, it's a never-ending game that we're going to lose. The biggest thing, again, goes back to funding. And I'm wondering, and I don't know, Deputy Chief, if you have the answer, or Ms. Fretwell, when was the last time, because I don't think you will have people doing that, if in fact there's a cost to them. So, where can you put the fee? To me, it's either one, in the citation, which may be reduced, but two, in the licensing. So, when was the last time, and how much, a dog, or cat, or animal licensing fee was raised? When, how long ago, and how much was it raised?
I'll have to get back with you on that, Mayor.
Because to me, that's critical. I recall, I don't have animals at home any more than coy and tortoises, which I hopefully are not to be licensed. But the reality is, that if in fact it was as long ago as when I, we had animals at our house that were licensed, I don't even recall, except maybe once, a license fee increase. And therefore, dependent upon what staff would recommend, a piece of that license increase could go to help funding in this area.
Karen and I, and Holly, we spoke a little bit earlier. We're all going to sit down, and some others involved as well, and we're going to see if we can come up with some different ideas.
And then come back, if you would, to the council. And Councilman Beers, you had something as well, and Councilman Ross. Councilman Beers? Oh, you're deferring to your partner.
Thank you, Councilman Beers. And Mayor, with all due respect, I would hate to think we would raise animal licensing fees and punish responsible pet owners trying to cover the costs of spaying and neutering on the other end of this. That's a big concern of mine, so I just wanted to share that with you, since you mentioned that. That's a big concern of mine. I think the fees for, Tim, you know the fees for animal licenses now, because I think, I want to say it's like $7 for a spay or neutered, or 15, and that is in that ballpark?
Yeah, it's less, I think it's less than that for...
I think it's $10 for a spayed animal.
Yeah. Spay and neuter.
Okay. And then a non-spayed or neutered animal, the license, the pet license fee is higher because they're not spayed or neutered. So, I think that's where the offset is, but it's difficult enough to encourage any pet owner to license their coy, or their tortoises.
My 70s coy.
I meant, I meant their cats or their dogs. But you understand what I mean.
Without question.
And we try to encourage our residents to go do that. It's now the law in the city of Las Vegas to do that. And not everybody complies, because sometimes, they don't even know. I didn't know I was supposed to license my cat, or my dog, or my tortoise.
Well, I think a lot has to do with what the price is, when it was last raised, and are you talking about a 10-cent raise, or a dollar? The biggest problem is, we do not have the funds available to control this growing population and do something. And so, where are we going to find the money? Aside from the donors who love animals and will do anything not to euthanize, you know, we've got to be able to come up, and maybe by meeting together and coming up with ideas, we can find a way. But not knowing what the fee is anymore for licensing of an animal, and who does it, it just needs, I think, further investigation and some recommendations. If you'd meet together, and then come back with some recommendations, thoughts, meet with the Deputy Chief, and come back to us. And if we could do that, if that's all right.
Mayor, with your indulgence, we hear you loud and clear, and we will get with Mrs. Lang and the team and come up with recommendations for you.
Great, that's best. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you all for coming.
Your Honor.
Okay. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you for recognizing me. I just simply want to say, I forgot to mention C5 as the agency which, volunteer agency which helped us this last week in our roundup. We'd had the benefit of Heaven Can Wait the very first time, and C5 was closest, I guess, most convenient to us. Debbie over there helped us a great deal. And it turned out, I have a couple of friends working for them, I didn't know until I brought in the animals, so. And another thing, you know, conejo tastes pretty good, and cats like conejo. In other words, that's rabbit. And so, you know, there are some feral cats that maybe be, should be turned loose amongst the rabbit population in order to help reduce that problem. That's number one. And number two, you can make a pretty good meal out of rabbit, by the way. I would not recommend eating cat. That's something else. That's another cultural thing I can't get over. But rabbit, it's very tasty. Thank you.
Mayor Goodman, if I may, in closing...
Yes, please.
I sincerely hope that we can be back here next year, thanking you for finding some money to allocate to organizations that are in the trenches, doing this free spay and neuters for the public. But I am encouraged by hearing that, hopefully, we can have some additional meetings and get back to you with some recommendations.
Thank you. And Orlando Sanchez will be involved with moving that. Councilwoman?
Don't we, as a city, if I could ask you, Ms. Federal, Betsy, if I could just ask you a question, don't we, as a city, give out grants each year to nonprofit organizations?
Primarily, we use the CDBG federal funds to do that, although that is something that we could reconsider, and I think, as, as Mr. Sanchez put on the record, we can consider some of the discussion that's been happening here, about what, what available resources might be able to be used.
I'm thinking that this would be, I don't know if this group has ever applied for the, that grant.
I'm not sure that animal care or sheltering would qualify for those federal funds. We'd probably have to look for...
Well, how about some of these, aren't you nonprofit groups? How about the nonprofit groups, don't, wouldn't make it?
I think you still have to meet the minimum criteria for federal funding for CDBG purposes, and I, I think we'd have to look at it, Councilwoman.
I just think we ought to look at it. Let's see if there's a possibility.
Absolutely.
Let's look at everything, because it's frustrating to work as long and as hard as these groups have, and done as well as they have, and as exhausted as they must be by this time, not being able to get some help from us when it is a benefit to the city. So if we could just check that out, if there's anything that we do give to nonprofits, if they could be one of the applicants, then we can consider it carefully for the benefit they do for the city.
Thank you, and I know what Ms. Fretwell said, we do have to be federally compliant, but we have just such an astute city council. Please, Councilman Ross, would you give us the numbers on licenses?
Thank you, Mayor.
Not for coy.
I feel so astute. Just looking up online for our licensing, a sterile dog license is $10, and renewed annually. For senior citizens, we give them a $5 break, so their license is only $5. And for a fertile dog, the fee is $25, renewed annually, and then for senior citizens or active adults, it's $15 for those sterile animals. But under our current ordinance, though, they've got to have a significant reason for that dog still being sterile, meaning they're a breeder, they're show quality dogs, and that sort of thing, which a lot of people do. And a lot of people are, have conformed and are abiding by our, our new statutes and the ordinances in the city of Las Vegas, and it's being very effective. Perhaps we need to take a look at that, and perhaps, Ms. Shattler, maybe it's the fines against violators that we look at increasing. I don't know, city attorneys are going to look at me sideways, but I think perhaps that's how we possibly supplement those additional costs at the animal foundation, is on the offenders, who aren't and blatantly ignore the city's laws in regards to animals. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Beers?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I, I have to confess, I spent a great deal of the discussion time here, thankful that Scott Baranoff didn't notch my ear 15 years ago. He's the urologist, anyway.
I know exactly who he is.
Topic for another day. We've talked a lot about controlling the number of incoming animals, not very much about controlling the number of outgoing animals. We've recently had some children leave our house and take animals with them. We're a little light. Are you open this weekend?
I bet.
How would one go about, how would one go about adopting an animal? On the microphone, please.
You would come visit us between the hours of 11:00 in the morning and 7:00 at night, and look at the more than 200, are you thinking dogs or cats?
Yeah.
I think we have about 80 to 100 cats available for adoption at any given time, and 200-plus dogs.
And that's...
And I might offer our neighborhood, if you come with a nice big fishing net.
Mojave and Washington?
Bonanza and Mojave.
Bonanza and Mojave?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We are going to make headway here. We already have. Thank you very much. And Ms. Robinson, thank you so much. Okay, before we move on to Agenda Item 24, we are going to go into the closed session on litigation, briefly, for, let's say, 10 minutes? 10 minutes. So at 11 o'clock sharp. Is our sandwich shop open inside here, in City Hall yet?
No.
I could have said, everybody go out and go next door. Well, you can go across the street to MTO, get a quick bite, be back in 10 minutes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that puts us now into Agenda Item Number 24. One, two, three, four. So, "Report for Possible Action Regarding a Financial Overview of the Redevelopment Agency and Affiliate Nonprofit Organizations of the City of Las Vegas." Words one, three, and five, Council Persons, Tarkanian Coffin, and Barlow. And so, as Mr. Art comes. There's Mr. Art. Your setter in front, Mr. Art, if that's all right. Please. And on Agenda Item 24.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman, members of council. For the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. With me today is Phil Steckinger, Economic Development Asset Manager for our department. I'm going to let Phil first speak briefly about where we've been as an agency and where we're at today, and then I'll wrap up laying out where we're headed and some of the things that we're doing to make sure we keep sound financial footing for the Redevelopment Agency. So with that, I'll turn it over to Phil.
Thank you, and good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
For the record, Phil Steckinger, Asset Manager for Economic and Urban Development. The first thing we'd like to talk about is the impact of the recession on property tax revenues. For the city's general fund, from peak to trough, the revenues for property taxes went down 36 percent. The redevelopment area was more hardly hit. In fact, from peak to trough, it went down by 54 percent. This next slide depicts the increase over the decade from FY 2003 to where we had peaked out in 2010. It also has where we are as of the last unaudited financial statements that we have. And you can see that from 2010, the RDA's revenues for property taxes were $28.3 million. For this last year that has just ended, we're just a shade over $13 million. One thing I would also want to emphasize is that for the general fund, whereas a shade less of the revenues, or less than 20 percent of the revenues are made up of property tax, and excessive 90 percent of the RDA funds are made up of property taxes. A couple of issues that really impacted the redevelopment revenue in terms of property tax the most. The first is assessed value decline. From that period, it went down from $1.6 billion to $530 million, which is a decrease of 71 percent. Also, the property tax caps that are in place, which is AB 489 from the 2005 legislative session, as well as NRS 3614722, have created abatements and also impacted our revenues as well. This next graph depicts that decline. One thing that's kind of interesting in taking a look at this is those that represent the base. The base during those periods of decline were not impacted because they were guaranteed their base, whereas basically with that decline from the $1.6 billion, which we had in 2008, 2009, to where we are today as of our decline to $530 million, we had, in essence, the redevelopment area had taken the entire decline of that. One thing before I leave this slide, I would want to emphasize a piece of good news. For FY '14, the increment that is shown here, the $530 million, had increased to $568.5 million, which is an increase of about 7 percent, a little over 7 percent. And a lot of that is because of the projects that have come online in downtown, which increase the valuation. Just to put it in perspective, that equates to a little over $110 million as far as taxable value. Another piece of really good news is that you look at the segregation report that the county has, there was about a 20 percent decline in land value during this last year, which tends to be a lagging indicator with what is happening with land value prices. I think that that bodes well for the future because in the last year, year and a half, there's been an uptick in the land prices. One of the things I wanted to just take a little bit of time and look at the RDA as a whole. When you look at the RDA, the two basic components are the redevelopment area, which is the operations, and primarily the debt service. And then we also have the nonprofits. The nonprofits are comprised of City Parkway 4A, City Parkway 5, and Office District Parking 1. And those were created and assembled to have land holdings as well as future development. This slide depicts what we have in terms of revenues. It also talks about where we are in terms of expenditures, as well as what we have in terms of reserves. And you can see that, looking at this, we have an ending fund balance for this year of roughly $50 million.
A question, Councilman Beers.
Thank you. Could we go back to the last slide for just a second? So, there's not a lot of activity taking place in terms of revenue and expenditure in these nonprofits, but they actually hold more than half of the combined assets of, I guess you'd call this the consolidated, in my world, it would be a consolidated company. What's the breakout of those assets between cash and real estate? And then, if you will, if, for the portion that is real estate, we're probably carrying that at an acquisition value, and perhaps even we've got some development dollars that we put onto that acquisition value, that carrying value in the past? Have we done an analysis of our carrying values of our noncash assets to what might be the market out there?
To answer your question on a couple of things, and your first question is as far as the nonprofits, the carrying value that we had as of last year, and I don't have the on/inaudited information sitting in front of me, I think at that time, we had roughly about $30 million in land holdings. There has been, in fact, one, there was a Boyer land sale that had taken place, or is in the process of being taken place currently, for $2.5 million. Also, we have one other one that is coming up right now, but as far as the cash holdings that the nonprofits have, currently, they had $12.5 million as of unaudited as far as this for FY '13. In addition to it, there's an additional $1.4 million in the capital fund for Symphony Park. And then also, this, the Boyer sale that is taking place right now is an additional $2.5 million. So, in terms of cash, they have right now about $16.4 million in cash in the nonprofit affiliates. To your question, too, as far as the land value holdings, what is under contract currently as far as the land sales that are scheduled? Those are currently expected to be a shade over, I think it's about 35 percent higher than the amount that they're carried on the balance sheet at.
But it's going to be pretty individualized on a case by case. I imagine that that's all, that percentage is all over. So, looking at this slide, I would say, okay, so we're losing seven million bucks a year. We have enough stuff to do that for seven years. Maybe it's eight if our assets, if our real estate is undervalued a little bit, maybe it's six if our real estate is undervalued a little bit. Does that make sense, looking at this?
That would be a fair statement, yes. One thing, too, I just wanted to address, and also, there are land holdings in the redevelopment area as well. There aren't a lot of land parcels that are still there. Those are on the books at $4 million, too. So I did want to at least address what the land holdings in the redevelopment area were as also. This next slide depicts what has happened over about a seven-year trend in our redevelopment area. And one of the things you can see is that-
Excuse me, Madam, could I just ask a question? Can we go back to that last slide?
Sure.
I'm trying to follow the acumen of Councilman Beers down there. You said that about $16 million was with the nonprofits? And does that mean maybe approximately $11 million is with the RDA? I'm just trying to understand how you're placing this.
I think Councilman Beers' question was, is that in that ending fund balance, a certain segment of that piece is land holdings, which is a, not necessarily a fungible asset, it's not easily exchanged. And then his other question was, is that what's happened with land values that a lot of times, because of what, you know, has declined, what's this on the books for-
Could you break this up? Because I understand the nonprofit affiliate segment, trying to understand the RDA. What would be, what do you have in an ending fund balance for the RDA?
Okay, I'm sorry. As far as the ending fund balance in the RDA, I think we roughly have about $2 million in cash. There's also, with accounting practices, you have year-end accruals, and we have a property taxes, which we get shortly after the year-end, which probably equates to another, probably five to six million dollars.
With the figures that you have here, which represent now, it says ending fund balance, 22.4 for RDA. I don't understand that. I'm lost.
Okay. The ending fund balance would be your-
Because you're saying two, about two million ending fund balance, and this is 22.4?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's cash and there's noncash assets. The ending fund balance is all assets-
I see.
-exceeding what you would have as far as liabilities is your ending fund balance.
So, the RDA, when you're saying you have 22.4, you have two million cash, and the rest is in other things, like land?
Some of it is in land and fungible assets, which is, is cash is one of those. We have $2 million in there. We probably have somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 to $6 million in receivables. A lot of that is a property tax payment that we receive right after the year-end. So as far as what we would have in fungible assets, what we would be looking at is somewhere in the neighborhood of probably $6 to $7 million. One of the things, and it gets a little bit tricky, that the ending fund balance, we have to have a certain amount of reserve for our debt, which represents $9 million. So even though you have that in cash, it's a restricted asset because it needs to be held.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
Thank you. This next slide that I have has a breakdown over from fiscal year 2007 to '13. And one of the things that you can see is the property tax revenues that we had had, we were going along at a pretty good clip, exceeding our expenditures, and in 2011, we crossed over. And one of the things that you can see that in terms of where we are right now with our expenditures for, that are unaudited for this current fiscal year, it exceeds what we have in terms of property taxes by $6.5 million. The gap that I had on one of the previous slide had a $5.4 million. We have about a shade over a million dollars in other revenues, which is largely the Fremont Street experience. Taking a look at our current financial status, over the last four years, we've decreased our expenditures by 18.5 percent, or $4.4 million. And we've used some of the transfers back from the affiliates, affiliate nonprofits that we had on the previous slide. We still have an operating deficit for this, unaudited for this fiscal year that just ended, of $5.4 million. One of the things that is a difficult piece is over two-thirds- One of the things that is a difficult piece is over two-thirds of our RDA expenditures is debt service. And just as a point of debt service, typically with redevelopment areas, most, most of those areas use, take out debt on capital expenditures like we had with Symphony Park. And again, it's part of building critical mass and land assemblages for, for building those types of projects. Also, there were nine EUD positions that were shifted from, to redevelopment funding starting in 2009. This next slide depicts that. As you can see, that over a period of a 10-year period, the staffing breakdown, and after 2007, 2008, those nine positions were shifted to the redevelopment area. We have currently five less budgeted positions than we did in 2010, 2011. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Bill. He's going to talk about the solutions of what we're doing to tackle some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I think Phil gave a pretty clear picture of where we've been and where we're at. And as Councilman Beers alluded to, we do have a significant annual deficit that we're funding. And Phil had mentioned this, but I just want to emphasize, really one of the main reasons that the redevelopment agency exists is to get new private investment, new projects on the tax rolls in our downtown area, in our redevelopment area. So for that reason, we look a little bit like a real estate development company. We have a lot of capital expenditure. We're not building all the projects ourselves, we're a partner, but we're spending a lot of money on capital infrastructure and investing in upgrading the infrastructure to ready downtown and our, both our publicly owned sites as well as our private sites in downtown for new investment. Symphony Park is obviously a great example of that. So we do have a big capital expense. We have trimmed the staffing, as Phil had mentioned, but we are running a combined deficit annually, as indicated, end of FY13, unaudited of $6.8 million. We do have assets and fund balance, part of that's cash to help us manage through that. But we're not resting on our laurels. We're working on a couple of strategies long-term that we think is going to help contribute to our financial stability. The first is we're looking to put large private projects on the tax rolls. And this is really, again, why the redevelopment agency exists, that we really need to be self-sufficient. And we're doing that by putting new projects on the tax rolls. Just for announced projects between FY15 and FY18, we have $150 million in assessed value for those announced projects, spread out over those next four fiscal years. That includes projects like the mixed-use medical campus being proposed by Citra Real Estate Capital as well as others. Does not include all the smaller investments that are made over time from all the restaurants, food and beverage, office renovations, but it does include projects we've been directly involved with. And we're of course trying to track not only what impact that's going to have on our community, but also fiscally, what impact will that have on us? So that impact, $150 million in assessed value, $430 million in taxable value, and that's significant. And that will help with generating new, new revenue since the agency's funded by tax increment revenue. New revenue from new projects, that's our main source of revenue. The second strategy that we have is we're going to be working closely with our legislative team to look at the property tax structure. This is an issue bigger than just the redevelopment agency or even the city. There are a lot of entities funded throughout the state on property tax. Of course, our city is, but there are a lot of jurisdictions throughout the state, education and others, that are funded with property tax. And having the property tax caps act and function the way they do now makes it hard to budget. It makes it hard to predict where our revenue's going to come in if you have caps, which aren't even fixed caps, but fluctuate. So we're going to work closely with our legislative team on that. And again, it's going to be part of a bigger conversation.
Excuse me, Councilman Ross.
Thank you. And Bill, I know you and I talked about this legislation, pursuing state legislation to modify the property tax structure. I think that's awesome that we're going to attempt and try to go do that. But I want to, let me speak, let me ask you just briefly, the extension of the RDA got approved last session, has that been, has that been helpful or give us a status on that? How's that affected what you're trying to accomplish here?
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. And that, that directly feeds into my third bullet on the slide with refunding of some of our debt. As, as you noted, we got approval from the legislature to extend the sunset date of our agency, which currently for Area 1 is March of 2031. We got an additional 15 years, which would take us out to 2046. The significance of that is it allows us flexibility in restructuring some of our long-term debt. So the third bullet, refunding of some of our existing debt, potentially saving as much as $4 million a year, we're proceeding down the path to get that done. With the extension, we have to meet some tests that were written into the law. We've hired a plot analysis to help us with verifying that. So not only is it staff's opinion, but we have an outside firm saying, yes, you meet all the requirements so that we actually go to, when we actually do go to market to refund this debt, and we've done the extension, that that holds up and everyone throughout the process has an assurance that we did it properly. So we're in the process of doing that now. We expect to get that done first quarter next year. And then with the refunding of the debt, most of our debt was from debt that was issued in 2009. We did an $85 million bond issue. That was a blended interest rate of between 6 and 8%, much higher than our historical cost of money. We can of course predict where rates are going to be in the future. So there's certainly interest rate risk as far as what happens in the future. But given our historical cost of money and what we've seen historically with the municipal bond market, we think that's a conservative projection as far as our ability to refund some of that debt. So tying to your question, Councilman, what that means is it's not just refunding debt against the existing term, but potentially taking that term out, meaning the repayment term is longer. So we amortize that debt over a longer period of time, could save us a lot of money in the short run.
Councilman Beers.
Of course, by costing us a lot of money in the long run. Let's not leave that part of extending the term of our debt off the equation. So, $430 million in taxable value by 2018 would generate about $5 million in property tax for us? Does that sound right?
It would, it would probably be about $4 million in-
I don't have much stock in pursuing state legislation to modify the property tax structure because as you know, this property tax revenue is actually already earmarked by the legislature for schools and dog catchers and stuff, and it's temporarily being diverted to us and they're already pretty annoyed with the process. California kind of, I guess, did away with it. Partial refinancing of debt assumes that today's interest rates will be in effect in 2019. I don't put much value in that. So so far, we've still got a deficit of about $1.5 million based on our current operating deficit of 6.5. Next slide?
Next slide. Of course, Phil mentioned that the fund balance, the real estate assets, we're trying to convert those assets to, to cash. So having a fund balance and not being able to use it in the short run hurts us. So converting those assets to cash is important to the extent that land appreciates over time and we can capture that value. That's a real important part of our strategy. A lot of our recent sales have actually been at or above market. Two of them, for instance, the land at the Federal Justice Tower, we actually sold at high appraised value, realized a book value gain on that sale. And land in the Las Vegas Technology Center, though not in the urban core, was held by City Parkway 5, Inc., and sold to the Mountain View Hospital at over appraised value also. So we're being very mindful of each transaction moving forward, trying to capture not only long-term value, but also capture initial value on the initial sale of that land.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Beers. Mr. Hart, can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Solution, put large private projects on tax rolls. Now, I think we can understand that at the council level, but would you explain that to the public so they understand that concept and what you're, what you guys or what we are doing as a city to make that happen?
Certainly. We have-
Mayor, with your permission?
And, and I agree with Councilman Ross, but, but put it in context of, say, that Mountain View piece of property. When we sold that, it's not just a capital gain we received because they then built some stuff and that increases property assessed value, right? And that's, bring that piece in for us, I think is where Councilman Ross is going.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, Councilman Ross, Councilman Beers. I'll use a specific example for the transaction we just took before you. Citra Real Estate Capital Development Firm out of California, they've, we're in agreement now, and they've put up deposits, which go hard next spring, to build a $72 million mixed-use medical building. We sold the land, so we're going to get cash in, which helps on that end, but the bigger prize for us, the long-term prize, is new tax revenue. So right now, that site in Symphony Park in our 61 acres is vacant land. It's not generating much revenue. It's about a three and a half acre site. That $72 million project annually is going to generate significant revenue into the agency. So it goes through that assessment process and then 1% of value, that would be roughly 700, potentially as much as $700,000 annually on a recurring basis. So that, that's significant. That's just one project. We're intentionally conservative. We're not forecasting what projects might come through our door later this year, next year. These are real projects, real agreements that we're actually tracking.
Mr. Hart, Mr. Councilman Beers, that's another comment, please.
And that Citra property tax, the new property tax from the Citra project doesn't just go to the redevelopment agency, if I'm, or it doesn't. Isn't there a component that already belongs to everybody else there or no?
Right. So the, the, a rule of thumb roughly today, based on the way the tax, taxes work, in theory, that slide where you saw the orange bars and the white bars, all the new taxes, the white bars, would come to us. In practice, it's a little bit different. There were some voter-approved overrides for Metro Manpower, for Fire Life Safety and for School District. So about 25% of those new taxes actually go to those voter-approved initiatives. So about 75% today, based on the current military rates, comes into the agency. So 700,000, about 75% of that, 700,000 would actually come into the agency. So we're, we're discounting for that factor in our, in our modeling.
Please continue.
And again, bringing the theory full circle, because this is all kind of theoretical and the legislature is, I guess, in a living experiment with it. After a period of, we're to take that money with our redevelopment agency and erase blight. And by golly, I'd want to move in next to that new $72 million facility that Citra's built. So just having it built increases the likelihood that we'll have more vacant land become useful.
On the tax rolls.
After a period of decades, the redevelopment agency automatically dissolves as a course of law, and the incremental property tax that we've generated through our activity is then distributed under the normal distribution formula. Correct?
Correct. Yeah. Simple way of saying it is when we hit that sunset date and end as an agency, there's going to be a windfall on a recurring basis, a boom to the, all the tax jurisdictions, not just locally, but throughout the state.
Thank you.
If I could go back to the-
Thank you, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could go back to the next slide and just wrap it up. The last two strategies really kind of fall along those same lines. The second bullet being conversion of taxes and properties. There's a property in our downtown area that just sold to Derek Stevens, the owner of the D Hotel Casino and other properties. He has purchased the former Clark County Courthouse site and is looking to put that to new productive use. Today, because it's been owned by the county up until the sale, it's not generating any taxes for anyone. So looking at it strategically, trying to minimize the public footprint and maximize the private footprint. In other words, take those taxes and properties, put them on the tax rolls, that's significant. Another practical example is our former City Hall. Just on sale, even before all the improvements were done by Zappos, they became one of our 15 largest taxpayers in our redevelopment agency and one of our larger taxpayers in the city. So that's important to note. And then finally, and this is more kind of for discussion purposes, as an agency, but also as an economic development office, we obviously do a lot of different things. We do our downtown redevelopment. We also do economic development, working to bring new businesses into the city, grow existing ones. We have a very successful and improving parking program. Can we diversify our revenue streams so that on an operating basis, to cover operations, we're not dependent solely on redevelopment revenue? And the, I think the idea that on this list that may be most promising, there are probably two, but the first one, loan origination fees, we have an application into the U.S. Department of Treasury to actually as a city, run a new market tax credit program. We have a $100 million application into Treasury. We'd essentially be making loans through use of federal tax credits. And so if we're successful with that effort and others, that's kind of a fee-for-service type of an arrangement where we're going to generate fees from all the borrowers in that program, that can actually fund operations. The other thing for here that is important to note is Tourism Improvement District. You haven't heard a lot about these recently, but the way we look at those districts is it can be a dollar-for-dollar offset for some of those capital expenses we're spending. We do have one approved Tourism Improvement District for the CIM project to be developed around the post office block. We're looking at potential of others, and if we're successful in enacting new Tourism Improvement Districts, that generates new dollars which can fund infrastructure, which we'd otherwise spend potentially using our redevelopment agency dollars. So that, that's kind of another creative way to try to blend some of that funding, still get new projects moving forward without the agency spending as much on that infrastructure supporting those private projects as we might otherwise have done. So that kind of wraps up the presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, then Councilwoman, how about you make a motion to approve the report?
To accept the report?
Yes.
I'm very pleased to make a motion to accept the report.
Thank you very much. It's wonderful. Thank you. Good news. There's a motion, please vote and please post. And also to commend staff. I mean, I know that's really exciting that that Clark County building is finally going to be gone, something else there. So it's wonderful news. Thank you for that effort. It's huge. Obviously, we appreciate it and thank you very much. We will now move on to agenda item 25, report for possible action regarding the review of the financial forecast model for the city of Las Vegas, again in reference to all wards and-
Good morning, Mayor. For the record, Mark Vincent, Chief Financial Officer. With me is Venetta Appleyard, who will be doing the presentation. And I just wanted to introduce the item for you and remind you that we've been doing this now for four years, maybe five. We've kind of lost, I may have lost track. And we've always been doing this since the start of the recession as a way to help us go through our planning process. As you know, we kick off our budget here in December. We've got some, you typically have a strategic meeting with you all in, in December, January timeframe. And one of our constricting factors is always revenues, right? So what we've been doing for the last four years is we have a committee, that Venetta will explain, that outside private sector folks that help us review our revenues for our planning purposes and put, to put that sort of constriction on where we can go with our budget. So as we go through our strategic planning and budget development, we know we've got a pretty decent revenue forecast. And so as a reminder, what you're going to see from Venetta today is, A, not a budget, it is a forecast. The revenue numbers will change as time goes on, as we get better data from both the assessor's office and, and the county treasurer, as well as our sales tax numbers and consolidated tax numbers, and as we develop the budget. So this is a planning tool. And so if you take it as that, that would be appreciated, and I'll turn it over to Venetta.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
And if you will be sure to repeat your name and department for the record. Thank you. And you have to push the button first.
Oh, I turned it off.
Great, thank you.
My name is Venetta Appleyard. I'm Acting Finance Director for the city of Las Vegas.
I'm going to have to get up your slide and get that a try.
Okay. Isn't technology wonderful? Without- It worked. Yeah. As Mark indicated, the last four years, we wanted to give you some financial background. We created reserves during this period of time. We established a fiscal stabilization fund of approximately $51 million in 2011. And as, as we've seen, executed our budgets throughout the years. Last year in FY13, you authorized us to reallocate $38 million of that. 23 went to necessary- to position ourselves for a possible sale of an asset that had debt associated with it. We've been very conservative in our spending and underrunning our expenses, and we've been very proud of retaining our bond rating at this, during this period of time. And with council's continuing support and commitment to making financially sound decisions, we've been physically sound and despite that sagging economy and our declining revenues. Mark mentioned that we do engage a financial oversight committee. This is a committee comprised of various individuals throughout several industries in Southern Nevada. On November 21st, we met with that committee. It's a six-member committee, and their focus, again, is on the revenue. We provide our projections and our assumptions as it relates to revenues for the city, and with their advice and counsel, we work with them and move forward. We're happy to report that we gave them our assumptions and we gave them our projections. They concurred, and so, going forward, we will be using those assumptions. Just to recap a little bit of how we see FY14 performing, the C-tax revenue, we're projecting that to be at 4.1% increase over last year. Property tax, we're seeing it still being relatively flat. And with our budget, we are, if you recall, we increased our budget slightly for project restorations and some staff additions. As we saw the economy coming back a little bit, we wanted to make sure we were matching our revenues. We are still able to maintain our fund balance at 21%. Thank you. And that's above our budget policy of 12%. But last year in our budget, we modified that and gave an aspirational goal of 20%, which we know the rating agencies like to see. And as far as expenditures go, we're still looking at $481 million in expenditures. You'll notice that the biggest portion of that is public safety, which is 65% of that spending budget. That includes detention and enforcement, fire, and the marshals group, the criminal side of the attorney, city attorney's office, and our metro portion, and our metro portion of the budget. So, again, that 65% in 2008, that number was 61%, which shows how we are reallocating resources to priorities. This slide illustrates our revenues. The bars represent the expenditures, and the green line represents the revenues. I think this is a great illustration of how we have responded. We see our declining revenues. You can see that we then responded by decreasing our expenses. You'll note that in FY8, the revenue line is above, showing that our revenues were in excess. And if you look at FY13, this is the first year since FY8 that we are going to be seeing positive revenue against our expenses. And again, as we projected through '15 and '16, we're pretty much matching our expenditures to what we expect the revenues to be.
Can I stop right here, Mayor? Can I just stop right there? Thank you, Mayor. Through the mayor, to even, and I, that graph says a lot, and I know these are conservative numbers, but, and I told you that yesterday in briefings, but I think it's significant to recognize this graph for the public's benefit, and you said it in your report in regards to, we've been watching our expenditures and our revenues, and we've been adjusting this, you know, appropriately. And Ms. Freewell, your team, including Venetta, has done an incredible job at recognizing the economy, recognizing places where we can cut and save, recognizing that we're still trying to provide that level of service that this community expects from us. And you've done it, and I just want to commend you again. All of us, as council members and the mayor, have commended you before and your team on keeping up with this, the economy. You've done a fabulous job. You continue to do a great job. And I want to point out, too, that in this graph, I still think it's a little conservative. I think we're going to be in the black in '14 and certainly '15 and '16 because of economic indicators and because of how we've responded as a local government, dealing with these issues and our expenditures. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman. Mayor Protan?
Yeah, thank you. Could you go back one slide? I mean, that's pretty significant that we spend 65% of our budget on public safety, which is kind of what the priority is. Everybody talks about public safety, and it was 61%, now it's 65%. And I know, Betsy, when we were up at the National League of Cities, you were a guest speaker at, in that one, on the budget, and somebody actually brought up the question, what's the, you know, what percentage of the budget should go to public safety? And I can't remember the numbers that people were throwing out from other communities, but I was thinking it was like in a 70%, and somebody mentioned eight. Do you remember those numbers? I'd like to kind of compare what we're spending on public safety to what these other communities had thrown out at that particular meeting, just to kind of get a gauge. Do you remember those numbers?
I think there was some discussion about what's the, kind of the right proportion of your budget that you ought to try and target for public safety, and I, I think that number was closer to 55 to 60, because what tends to happen is you're less able to invest in infrastructure and other things that local governments do if you get too heavily weighted in your operational costs. But you're right, there were many communities who are still struggling with the recession and their investment levels in critical services like public safety were up in the high 60s, low 70s, which really leaves you very little room to do the rest of what government does, and it leaves you very little access to be able to continue to reinvest in infrastructure, which is one of the balancing points that I believe you all have had conversations about over the last couple of years, particularly with the asset management discussion that Councilman Coffin has been advocating, you know, that we, we're trying to do a little bit of both, and we're really cognizant about letting that number creep up to outweigh what it takes to keep the general government going as well and be smart about what we're doing out in the community. So, we're, you know, we're trying to keep that amount of investment, you know, as stable as we can and grow back some other areas. I mentioned that in this last budget, primarily, we added new positions in public safety, but based on our survey information, we found that after-school youth programming was really important, and so, we reinvested in that. In fact, we reopened the Dürfel Center in the Lorenz Park area that has adaptive programming that the region has come to rely on in direct response to that citizen survey. So, we're trying to, where we can, in our recommendations to you, be responsive to what you've indicated as priorities, build into that model, the things that we're hearing from the citizens in the citizen survey, which we're about to get the results on here in the next couple, couple of weeks, hopefully in the next month. And then, in the spring, as Mark mentioned, we'll get together and we'll talk some more about your priorities going forward. I don't think there's a magic number, but I do think that we want to make sure that we're not over-investing in an area that undermines our ability to perform overall as an organization, and that there are a lot of things that we do outside of the public, the, what is easily defined as public safety, badges and uniforms. It takes the other side of the government to actually make their job easier. You know, if you've got good streets and well-designed traffic intersections and signalization that works appropriately, you're going to have less traffic accidents, you have to have less cops, you have less injuries, you have less hospital needs, you have less jail needs and all those kinds of things. So, it's a balancing act. I think it would be, you know, ideal if we could keep this number somewhere around the 60% number. It just hasn't been able to happen because of the massive reduction in the revenues we've had. So, I think we're doing really well in the 60s, because there are a lot of cities that are way above that, closer to 70, 75%. And it doesn't give you much choice on those other things that you all have told us are equally important in your priorities.
Well, and I would add to that, too. Of course, we have 350,000 people coming into town from out of town every week, and we have responsibilities with the special events that seem to be increasing, and you can't have a community if it's not safe. So, the fact that Las Vegas itself is unique in our country and probably in the world, I'm not sure you're going to be able to stick with that. Perhaps you can, and there are different areas that you're going to have to work through. This looks like, what is this, 70? 70%?
It's a little over 65.
Yeah, 65. 65.
65%. So, I mean, you know, just knowing the numbers that we have and knowing about our homeland security and every other area that's cut back, I don't, you're going to be, unless you go into the money-making business, which we'd appreciate.
I've threatened to start a minute.
I don't know how you're going to do it. Keep working on it, though. It's great. Thank you. Please, Venetta, go ahead.
So, that brings us to our first look at FY15's general fund expenditures. We're projecting about $494 million. Again, this is not the budget you will see at the end of the year. This is just our starting point. We're going to be rolling this out with the departments, talking to them. We'll be talking to city management. We'll be meeting with you all again. As you know, we'll be doing budget workshops, council briefings, and eventually, this will turn into what we will see as our budget. But right now, we're looking at the 494 million, 56% of the 270 million is salary and benefits related to our employees. The next large number is the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. We're projecting 125 million there, and that represents 26% of this budget as well. Our debt service is going to be...
Councilwoman. Councilwoman has a question.
Could I ask a question? In your salaries and benefits for safety, do you include those individuals who work in safety as far as building is concerned? I know you include the firefighters.
Public work, yes, yes.
So, in our building and safety department, you...
They're classified.
That's classified in here?
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't know how you could do much else if you don't, if you put much more in there. I don't know how you could do much of the other things. Thank you.
Again, debt service is 3.6% of our budget. Our nonlabor, which is all, is representing about 16% of the budget at the $80 million range. And the next slide, how do we pay for this? Our revenues, we're projecting 492 million. Consolidated tax, of course, is our largest source of revenue. It's 52%. The next largest piece is property tax, which is 19% at 90 million. Remember, those two are the ones that we have, we do not have influence over, and that's 70% of our revenues. We moved to license and franchise, which is 17% of the budget, and other revenue is representing 14%. Since consolidated tax is such a large amount of our budget, we wanted to, you've seen this slide, I know you've seen this slide before, but the bars represent the dollar amount, and the line represents the percentage change. We just wanted you to see that as we've gone through the deficit, we're starting to come back up, and we're projecting here a 3.5% for FY15. Property tax, the same scenario. We have bars representing the actual dollar expenditures, and we have the line representing the percentage change. And as you can see, we're representing this to be relatively flat through FY13, 14, and 15, but '15, we are projecting a 2% growth in property tax. So, for FY15, the budget financial picture, C-tax, we're going to be growing at 3.5%. Property tax, we're expecting a 2% increase. And as you recall, we embarked in the spring on a revenue enhancement study. We looked at several areas that we could influence on that, that other side of the pie, and we are in this projection, there are 6 million that we are putting in here. It relates to park fees. It has some building and safety, building, if you recall, building and safety was going to transition their increases in over four years. They haven't increased their fees at all during this point, so we'll be doing that as well. And on the expenditure side, we have a 2.5% increase in expenditures for salaries and benefits. This takes into consideration our collective bargaining unit commitments that we've made. We also are showing metro to increase about 3%. Nonlabor, we're giving 2% for restorations and making sure we can keep pace with services. And as a reminder, we put a vacancy factor in on the larger departments. We know that throughout the year, people are going, coming in, transitioning, attrition, they're not always there. So, we have not, we've taken 3% out of the larger departments, taking into consideration that they will have those vacancy factors. This, the 3%, we typically run around 7%, so we're hoping that, but the 3% is definitely, as we're required to budget all positions, it gives us a little hedge against that. This, this is the guts of the presentation, I guess you might say. This is our fiscal forecast. FY13 represents our current estimate. As you can see, revenues are exceeding expenditures by $9.9 million, and we are having an ending fund balance of 107 million or 22, 20, almost 23%. The highlighted FY14 tells us where we are currently in that fiscal year. We are expecting to have expenditures in excess of revenues, so we are expecting to end that $9.7 million to the red, which will bring our fund balance down to 97 million, but we're still at 20% fund balance.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
With your permission. But I don't forget to mention, these are conservative numbers.
These, we are entering in this with those conservative forecasts that we mentioned to you earlier in the presentation.
And that's significant, Mayor and Council, because when it comes back better, she looks better.
But we would be, but we know that some things happen, and we unaccounted for contingencies, so. And FY15, these are the numbers we were just sharing with you. We have 492 in revenues. Again, we're projecting 493 in expenditures. This is only a 2.2 deficit, and gets us to a $95 million ending fund balance or 19%. And FY, and I thought that got changed, but that's really FY16. And again, that's relatively flat. We're almost break even at that point.
Excellent.
Mayor, I might just add that, as, before Venetta goes on...
Sorry.
I really, I'm hoping that we will be able to bring balanced budget. I'm hoping it will not be a deficit budget coming to you this spring. So, that's one of my key goals, is to turn the corner this year on this budget. So, we'll be working really hard to try and mitigate that small deficit that's left. Keep our fingers crossed that we can meet your needs and the community's needs and maybe have a budget that is in the black to start with, instead of working to make it in the black by the end of the year, which is what we've successfully done this past year.
Well, good job, and wages and benefits look to be the biggest piece there. Yes, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. Betsy, what is the federal funds forecast, either passed through from the state or direct in any way? Because I just, I'm worried about another round of sequester reductions, and we don't know, and I know, I'm not sure where we account for them in here, the, the other?
Councilman, we do, we do account for them. They're usually intergovernmental, revenues that come in. We account for what we anticipate will be a reduction. That's why we follow very closely the HUD budget, for instance, the U.S.C. grant funding formulas and things of that nature. We have historically not had a tremendous amount of reliance on federal funding, thank goodness, because you're right, a lot of the domestic spending has been being chopped along the way to address larger federal budget issues, and, and so, we've been trying to be prepared for that weaning off. There's relatively few, if any earmarks, that we receive anymore, and a lot of our entitlement funds have been reduced pretty drastically. So, I would say our risk in this budget on federal, decline in federal funding for our kinds of projects are, is pretty low. One thing that we have been monitoring, Mark and I actually had a conversation about this a couple, a few weeks ago, is the Build America bonds that we used to finance the city hall, that we're kind of looking at that as a model to possibly reconsider how we pay off that debt going forward, because the sequester is impacting our forecast on that, and, and that may be something we could do a little better using another financing means. So, we're constantly monitoring our reliance on federal funding and federal programming and trying not to make long-term commitments on anything that might be cut. So, I don't know if that answers your question?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, as we recap FY15's financial picture, we're modeling in overall revenue growth of 4.2 million. Expenditures, we're modeling in $2.5 million growth. With that, we're going to maintain an ending fund balance of 19.3%. And as we spoke about on the RDA side, we have, the assigned amount is 5.9%, unassigned is 13%. And in addition, we still are maintaining our fiscal stabilization fund at 13 million. Our budget objectives are trying to sustain service levels. We want to, and we are trying to do the modest growth to answer what our citizens are asking for as far as increases in services at 2.5%. Obviously, this is to support council strategies. We want to come to you to tell us how you want And we are trying to do the modest growth to answer what our citizens are asking for as far as increases in services at 2.5%. Obviously, this is to support council strategies. We want to come to you to tell us how you want those resources allocated. We know that our... We also know that our LVCBA contract expires in June 14. These numbers do not take any... Into consideration any outcome of that collective bargaining at this time. We're continuing to watch the metro structural gap. And we will continue to implement ongoing review of our revenues in those areas that we can make a change to.
Thank you.
Our budget cycle, we do a five-year revenue and expenditure modeling, and that's ongoing. December is our budget kickoff. We'll be rolling out these amounts to our departments so they can start working with the numbers. In February, they'll be coming back to us with what they propose their budgets to be and updating their strategic business plans. March, council workshop. As you know, we do a workshop for tentative budget. And then May 20 will be our budget hearing. Well, we'll come back to you again with the final number that we'll present to the state. We'll file that on June 1. And then our fiscal year starts again July 1.
Thank you.
And with that, if you have any guidance for us...
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions? I would then move that we have a motion to accept the report, please.
Motion to accept the report.
Thank you, Vanetta. And Mark, thank you. This motion, please vote and please post. Thank you. That does carry. And agenda item 26. And Melissa Letourneau, are you still here? This was the agenda item she wished to speak on. So moving into agenda item 26. Report from the Department of Planning regarding the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, regional fruit and vegetable plant list assembled by the City of Las Vegas Department of Planning at the direction of Policy FP 1.2.2 of the City Las Vegas Food Access Policy Guide in reference to all wards. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and members of council. Flynn Fag with the Department of Planning here to give a brief report on the regional fruit and vegetable plant list that we've been developing. I have with me this morning Mr. Dave Cornoyer, who is one of our staff members with a background in landscape architecture. And Dave has been the lead on this project. As you're aware, we've made recent efforts to encourage community gardens, and we recently adopted a food access policy guide. This fruit and vegetable plant list is intended to be a complement to those efforts and also to encourage gardening here in Southern Nevada. This is also to complement the other two guides that we have in place through the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, the regional plant list, which was adopted by the SNRPC, let's see, two years ago, Dave?
Yes.
About two years ago. And then also a best practices manuals for planting here in Southern Nevada. The document creates a region-wide list of fruits and vegetables that will succeed here in our climate. And as those of you who have gardened here know, it is a very difficult climate. This is not a regulatory document, but rather it's intended to provide guidance to those who may be interested in gardening here or have recently moved to the area and may not be familiar with our climate and our soil conditions. The document itself provides a list of fruit and vegetables that do... That can survive here in our climate. Also in the table is a list of the water usage for each of the types of fruits and vegetables, their drought tolerance, exposure, and then the harvest dates, looking at when those would become available depending on the climate. This document is going to be presented to the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition in January of next year for adoption. But again, as Mr. Cornoyer was the lead on this project, we wanted to present it to the city council first to give you an opportunity to review it. I will also tell you that we do have the draft document available online on the City of Las Vegas website under the Department of Planning page. So any interested citizens can go ahead and access this document. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. And if you have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to take those at this time.
Does it say it is not formalized at this point when it's up on our website?
It is in its draft form, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Fag. Good morning, or good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Dave Cornoyer, Department of Planning.
Great. Anything?
Have any questions?
You did a great job here. I think it looks fabulous. I can't wait to go home and dig up something.
I went through this last night, and I want to tell you, I'm going to build one of those cement containers. And maybe my tomatoes and carrots will grow better. I mean, I know we have them at the senior homes, and I know that the seniors love them there. And we've sort of adjusted heights and everything. So I tried a couple of years, and I wasn't as fortunate as I had been in other places. So this is a good idea. And it's a very extensive list. And I'm glad you gave the familiar names and not just the botanical names. I got lost in there.
Really helpful. What do you do with the rabbits?
What do we do with the rabbits?
Those rabbits.
Are the rabbits back?
Councilman Coffin has a few ideas.
I have to tell you, we have some people celebrating in that Pinto Palomino area because...
At the Camorra. That's where we have that big garden.
Yes, yes.
It was wonderful.
Yes.
So it's very exciting.
So, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Beers?
You know, in deference to your rabbit concerns, would it be appropriate to move that we accept this report but request that carrots be stricken? From the list?
That's a great recommendation. We'll make sure there's a little asterisk on the city website that says. Thank you. It's a great report. We're really excited about it. And if you have some extras... Do we have some hard copy extras? Okay. Could I have one of the two, please? Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to Mayor Protem because staff has made a request.
Yeah, item number... Do you want to read that into the record here?
Okay. Our agenda item number 27. Report from the Informational Technologies Department regarding business intelligence technology at the city.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to obey that to the next meeting. What's the date on that, Beverly?
18th, isn't it?
Okay.
Mayor Protem, could we move it to January? Because your agenda on the 18th is kind of lengthy already. And it's not a rush on that item, so.
Okay, so the first meeting in January. We'll start off with all this new technology. January 8. Okay, that'll be my motion.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion then to obey to January 8, agenda item 26. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Excuse me, it was item 27. And that motion carries. Now we're on to... Oh, thank you very much for the donation there. This is agenda item number 28. Discussion for Possible Action or Request for Review of Conditions to Temporary Tavern Limited License Shipping Containers LLC DBA Container Park, 707 Fremont Street, Ward 3. Councilman Coffin. And either Mr. Fag or Ms. Duddelston is presenting on this, please, or both.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
At the last council meeting, you gave us direction to go back and work with the container park on the conditions to the license, particularly condition three. And we have done a great deal of work together in trying to address some of those issues. And I had a report handed out to you today. At this point in time, we have not solved that issue for you. We do have some proposals that we have agreed to, but we don't have finalization for you. So we have several options before you today. And I can go into those if you would like me to.
Please, if you would.
Okay. Let me move to the center.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, before we go into the options, it's complicated in a sense. We're continuing to trade information back and forth between the city and the parties. And I don't want to... I just don't think this presentation should take very much time. And it probably would if we allowed it to continue to go all the way through. I'm just wondering if we couldn't just obey this item for a couple of weeks. You know, data comes in too late. Our staff is having a hard time coping with that. My feeling is that we must be close. And it's just a question of trying to get together the week before a council meeting instead of the week of a council meeting. And that means time for staff to really have a check on this stuff. I'm really going to suggest to the council that we delay this again. And we must be getting close to resolution. And therefore, I'm going to suggest we delay it. Now, the amount of time... Maybe staff can tell us how much time they need or how much time they think. Or even representatives of the container park could tell us how much time they need.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to say that I think we've spent an awful lot of time on this already. I don't think we're close to coming to an agreement, Councilman Coffin, because they seem to be having their stand where they want to be, and they're not tending to come to mediation or to an agreement. Am I correct? I'm only going on what I've heard in meetings. But they have stood where they feel they want to stand and have not given much as far as our being able to make a win-win situation.
I'd like to ask, if I could. The container parks had a soft opening, which I understand was very successful. Are they not scheduled for opening tomorrow? I mean, they are open, a ribbon cutting's tomorrow.
They are. They are open. I've been out there three times to observe their operations during daytime.
Okay.
So they are open and they are operating.
And so what would this specifically delay?
What you asked us to address was to have unaccompanied minors in that facility. And we've dealt with a variety of issues and some issues to reduce some of the security requirements that were in our original conditions, those sorts of things. And we've come to consensus on many of those items. The one that is remaining is allowing unaccompanied minors in that facility.
Is there a way to accept part and not part? And I defer to Councilman Coffin on this. It's in his ward. But I'm wondering, is there any way that we can approve a piece and obey a piece rather than obey the whole thing and continue on and finitem?
Your Honor, she has prepared some options. If the council wants to spend the time, that's what we should do then. If members like Councilwoman Tarkanian really want to know exactly where it stands, I think we should hear it then.
Well...
We may choose to punt it, or we may choose to go ahead and vote today. But I just thought, for your benefit, Councilwoman Tarkanian, maybe we ought to hear these options that our staff feels are appropriate.
You sort of slipped past me there, Mayor. I was still talking.
Sorry.
I don't talk teeny bits. I talk big. Yeah, that's probably it. I... My understanding is the last thing is, as you stated, the age situation. I know that they have opened. I know that they've been very successful. My concern has always been that every time we open something or we do something, it's big, successful, positive media push. And then after a while, things get looser. And that's what I'm concerned about with the drinking there. If you want to obey it... I have no great objection to obeying it. I just feel you've done an awful lot of work on it already. But obeying, if that's what the council wants to do, it's fine with me.
Okay, and I would like to go back to my question, asking you. Is there a possibility to get some of this moved so that we are just obeying the portion that is the contentious piece at this point that is not resolved?
Mayor, maybe it'd be helpful if Karen at least just went through the presentation so you know what's tentatively agreed to, what's not yet agreed to, so you know what part of the work is close to complete. And then you'll have the whole picture, and then you can decide if you want to obey it.
Excellent. Is that all right, Councilman Coffin?
Yep, ma'am.
Please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if we can get this on the overhead so that the audience can see it as well. There we go. You asked us, again, to review condition number three, which was persons under 21 years of age are permitted within the outdoor entertainment complex only during normal operations. But any person under 18 must be accompanied by a parent or legal guardian at all times. We went through a variety of things at our meetings with the container park over the last two weeks. And there are some changes that offer them some more flexibility that, at the staff level, we feel we can support. The first one is to allow them to add a private event and banquet space. It's called the Cube Event Space. It's noted on your map. As long as it would not be open to the public. This is for private events only. So we would still contain that density level that you set of five alcohol establishments open to the public. The next one was to separate and segregate the lounge area in front of the booery and the deck above it. This is where the hard alcohol is. And to have that consumption area during normal business operations be limited to beer and wine. By containing the hard alcohol, we believe we go a long ways in creating an environment that is easier to control and allows them to reduce some of the requests that they had to substitute security and not have as many security guards in those areas. So we would also allow them to substitute one of the security guards. They proposed this week to have one security guard where your requirements require two. Is to substitute one of those security guards for a monitor as long as they have sheriff and alcohol awareness cards if that area is beer and wine. To allow the picnic area to be increased...
Excuse me, on that last item, that sheriff's work card then precludes that there's been a background check on that individual?
It requires a background check, yes.
Thank you, okay.
And that was indeed our concern, was that those folks that are monitoring those areas indeed have the background checks. They wanted to increase the picnic area from 200 individuals in that area to include it in the common consumption zone to 300. We've been working with the fire department on exactly what the occupancy of that area is. We believe it's closer to around 250 in casual dining groups. Our concern in that area is that we don't want that to be common consumption with minors present when it's in a concert standing room only, those sorts of things. If it's casual dining and eating, then it could be included in that, we believe.
Will you have that response from fire?
We did.
You do have it?
I do have it.
Okay.
So we would agree to increase that to 250 as long as we did have the security guard and a monitor in that area to watch those 250 people in those casual groups. Allow the buffer area around the interactive zone to have tables in that buffer area as long as they have the placards. They have those placards in place right now. We've been out and approved those. And that they have a 30-minute loitering policy so that their monitors and their guards are watching for anyone that has finished their meal in that area and to make sure they're not just loitering and drinking around that interactive play zone area. And as long as it's just beer and wine, that's very different than someone sitting there drinking hard alcohol next to that play area. So we can do that until nine o'clock, when everyone under the age of 21 is to exit the park. And then in the evening event operations, the conditions were that they would have one security personnel for every 75 persons. They would like to increase that to 250. So those are the conditions that we have gotten through at this point in time. The one that we do not have...
Okay, excuse me. So the condition three is agreed upon?
No. These are included in other conditions on the license.
So just the ones you've gone over have been agreed to?
The ones I have gone over, as long as they're taken as a package, because changing one... Changing that to beer and wine changes the security requirements.
Okay.
So these are all pieces of a puzzle. We then get to the question of minors, which we do not believe we are resolved on. And we need clear direction to see if your questions have been answered. The questions that we have at this point is, is the security? Is the overall policy question of, do you want unaccompanied minors in this type of facility? And making sure that we have a loitering policy that can be enforced if this is a decision that you want to make? And the entrance and exit to that facility. In the original plans, there was a kiosk. It was a controlled entrance. Your code requires a controlled entrance. And those plans have slightly changed, and it's a wide-open gate. It's very welcoming. It's very lovely when you come up. We're certainly not trying to change that. We need to make sure we understand how you would check those IDs. How are you going to control those folks as they come in? Those are the issues that we have not resolved. The bigger issue is the policy issue. On what direction do you want us to go on condition three? So we have prepared for you option A, which does not include unaccompanied minors and does include those other things that I went over. And then option B was the best that we could do on short notice to give you something to consider if you're ready to consider unaccompanied minors.
Okay. So give... Oh, Councilwoman, please.
I just wanted to ask, can you take... Can you go up to condition three and vote on that separately? Or does that have to go with condition three? I think that's what the mayor was...
The first conditions that I went over... The first conditions that I went over for you, option A, do not affect condition three.
So A then could...
Option A changes a variety of conditions. It changes the security standards. It changes that buffer zone. It requires, it allows the interactive zone to be open after nine o'clock. Right now, in their previous plan, that interactive zone was closed. They want it open for adults when they move into an adult-only environment. It allows them that. It allows them to get their VIP bar license and get it open. So we've, we've done as much as we can to address the many issues that were placed on the table in the last two weeks.
So on A, we could vote on that, and then that would set that aside and you could concentrate on the big problem, which is the H.
If that is indeed the, the policy direction that you want to give us, yes.
Okay. And if you'd announce yourself, and if you'd like to make some comments, we'd love to hear from you after you push the button.
Hi, Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, 300 South Fourth Street. Good morning. I'm Mayor Goodman, members of the city council. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. We do appreciate the hard work of the city, and we have worked as well over 100 hours since the soft opening in trying to get these issues. We have made many modifications and expensive redoing of certain things to help address the concerns that the city has had. So, so I want to make sure that you're aware that we have made many modifications and adjustments to our operations to, so that we can accommodate everyone's concerns and needs. But what we want to do today is, you know, we are willing to accept the conditions that are outlined in A and proceed with an abeyance on B for two weeks to 30 days, whatever the council. We're willing, again, to work with the city to get that finalized. But we can accept the conditions. There is one condition where it says that only beer and wine can be consumed on the, within the common consumption area. And we understand and have spoken with the city that that means when unaccompanied minors are present. So that's during normal operation hours. In evening and special event hours, then it would be open up. The common consumption area would be open up for all alcoholic beverages. And we came to that understanding as well. So I just want to clarify that on the record. But we're willing to do that, willing to hold it for consideration, further consideration by the council for option B in two weeks to 30 days, whatever the council desires.
Okay, Councilman, so if, are you of appetite for that, so that they have something and hold on the minor issue?
I am, Your Honor, I am. I worry when we get emails the day of a council meeting, the night before the council meeting. It's a little hard to digest. Councilmen obviously need time, you know, to read these things. But I think our staff, because it's living it, has, thinks this is a good solution. Now, if the client is willing to do that, then I think we could live with that partial as a, as a way to help keep moving the ball forward in what we think is going to be a very successful venue. They should by now get, be getting the message that we, we just don't take it lightly about the idea of mixing adults and children with alcohol and play. And of course, alcohol, you know, adults who play in the interactive area can also have consumed alcohol. So you get there, and you, they may have consumed it someplace else and not bringing it in there. But the idea is, you know, it's, it's not the easiest equation in the world to solve. It's, it's above quadratic and that, I could hardly get there myself. So, Your Honor, so, I mean, as just one member of this council, I'm comfortable with that solution. I don't know about the other members.
Well, let's put it to evoke, because it's in your ward.
To adopt option A and obey the rest.
As long as definitively, because in what you have given us, it doesn't say A, it does speak to three, so that clearly, since you're in agreement with the conditions that Ms. Duddleston brought forth, that we know what's being obeyed, which piece of it that we have. Do you see it?
Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Option A.
If you, if the idea is to move to accept part A...
Yes.
Then I would recommend that you make that motion and then direct staff to bring back an item at the next meeting or the January 8th meeting, whatever date you're comfortable with, to review condition three. Then that way, you can take action today and then you can take subsequent action on condition three at a, at a future meeting, whichever date you choose.
Thank you, that's very clearly stated. But we have...
It'll be noticed as condition three. It'll be noticed as condition three in the new notice. A new notice will be sent out, so it'll say condition three only.
I just want us all on the same page, condition three and B.
Okay, now, then one further thing, Your Honor. The council for the client has indicated either two weeks or a month for, to come back, to obey that law. Now, the question becomes, the 18th of December is before the Christmas vacation. Certainly, youth is part of this. There will be more youth around at that time. And so we need to ask the client or the representatives, does it matter to the business plan if this is deferred till the 18th of December or the 8th of January?
Well, we would prefer the 18th due to those issues and we'd like to...
Okay, can we resolve the issues in that period of time?
Your Honor, if I may, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. We will absolutely do our best. The agenda, deadline is at five o'clock today. When we only have two weeks, we have very little time, and I am getting new things at the last minute. So we have a new business license computer system going in next week. I have to raise my hand and say I have my plate full. I will work as hard as I can to do that. We may be before you asking for another two weeks at that time. If that's what you'd like us to do, we'll be glad to.
It boils down to security and paying for security, doesn't it really, Jennifer?
Yeah.
It boils down to some money here.
We've implemented an extensive security plan, something I've never even seen in my 10 years of practice.
Yeah.
And I think we're pretty accepted on security. It's just the addition of unaccompanied minors that we just need to finalize. And I think we're pretty close.
See, this is the bodies. Number of bodies in security can be the solution to all of this, in a way. For example, the client submitted a grid of security, which I understand, I think I can envision that. But then it subtracted from the number of security because they felt that they didn't need as many security. But yet, there's a large wide opening to come into the park, as opposed to the smaller opening that we visioned when we started this process. So that's what's making staff nervous. Numbers of security solve all those problems, or phases of security, or, you know, a platooning of them. I mean, there's got to be some answer, but it boils down to money. And so money buys bodies, and therefore, that's where it is. We should be able to get an answer in two weeks, I would think, but it better be really in a week, because, you know...
But if I may, according to Ms. Duddleston, she'd like by five o'clock tonight.
Well, the issue is, we have to meet the open meeting law requirements for posting. And so because we're, you know, losing some time here because of holidays and such, it puts some stress on Beverly to hit the open meeting law requirements and have...
Oh, she can do anything.
...information out sufficiently in the public. I think the other issue that has been kind of difficult about this complex issue is the fact that a lot of this is, you know, coming in at 10 o'clock at night, the night before the council meeting, seven o'clock in the morning before the council meeting, which doesn't enable us to brief you at all about what's being included. I think Councilman Coffin's point is, is if we go forward with a December 18th date, that the expectation is that we're briefing about the proposed solutions, even if there's not agreement, that those first two days of the following week, which would be the 16th and 17th, so that the whole council is aware of where we are in those discussions. The issue is, is that we're going live with N410, and that is the new business licensing application that's going to take most everything online, publicly accessible. It's a competing priority for Karen, and I recognize that she and her staff are the ones who are burning the candle at both ends, trying to accommodate some very important business licensing issues operationally, as well as dealing with the applicant's needs to be operational. So if you move forward with A today, at least that addresses some of the applicant's issues and some of the outstanding concerns. We'll do our level best to reach some sort of conclusion, even if it's not agreement, that we can have ready to brief on the 16th and 17th. And, and then if we get there and that's not sufficient, then we'll just have to deal with it, I guess, with the client and deal with it on January 8th or some subsequent date.
Mayor?
Councilman Barlow?
I'm just trying to wrap my arms around all of this, and I'm not one to rush to make a hasty decision specifically when something gets dropped on my desk amidst everything else that I'm dealing with, trying to keep up with here at the council meeting. So I'm not going to be in favor of moving forward with any of this until I have an opportunity to really sit down without being rushed to try to figure out A and B and how that fits into how I feel about this project moving forward. So just want to just put that on the record, that I'm not in agreeing, in agreement with moving forward with any of it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want you to know that your highlighter, if we could go back to Councilman Barlow, his highlighter, just to make this light, his highlighter and his tie match. Could you zero in on Councilman Barlow? How do you like that? Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else comment, questions?
I, I had one more.
Yes, please.
It seems that Ms. Duddleston will be under tremendous pressure in December with that new coming in.
I'll rest.
I, I know we're all rushed. We're all rushed. I'm very concerned, however. We want to make sure we get all of that computer, new computer system in the right way, right? And that takes time. We want to make sure that we do the best we can on that, and that takes time. If we're going to delay it, I would rather delay it until January, even though it might hurt the business a little bit, I would rather delay it till January to give her time. But, I mean, am I interpreting what you're saying correctly? And please don't be sweet and nice to us. Tell us the straight scoop on your time.
That's right.
We are doing our, our absolute best. We have a huge project in business licensing, and that is moving us to the next generation. And we have about 10 days to accomplish that. We are working day, night, and weekends for you to accomplish that.
All right, can I ask this a different way? You're still being sweet and nice. I know you're going to do your level best, but what I'm asking is, is that amount of time, even though you're trying your level best, the amount of time you think you will need to do this to the best of your ability?
To the best of my ability. I need to see that operation run for a while. We need to understand the changes that we're proposing today, that operation. We need to see crowds in that place. When I have been there, it's a lovely operation. It's working perfectly. I haven't seen it under crowds. When you have large amounts of people, things change, dynamics change, how this operates change. In meeting with Metro, one of the requirements of this, and one of the things that we have to do, is review all those plans with Metro under your code. So we've had a lot of people to get together and try to get through everything. That was one of their concerns. How is that entrance going to operate? How is it going to operate under crowds? Can we go watch it for a while? I'm not sure that we can accomplish all of that and give you our level best in two weeks. We would prefer 30 days, if that's clear. But we will, we will do what you tell us to do.
I know you would do your level best, but you're saying you would prefer, as a professional and having the work ahead of you, to have more than two weeks. And that's why I'm feeling we should give you more than two weeks.
So can we move then on that? Just do A and give the 30 days? Yes, Councilman.
They do not want it bifurcated. So therefore, my motion will be to obey this item to January 8th.
Thank you.
And I don't want to see us negotiating against ourselves.
Thank you.
I think that's about where we're at.
Okay, and Councilman Mayor Protem, please comment.
I just, I'm a little confused because the, the A section that we're talking about, everybody's in agreement on that. So why would we obey those items if everybody agrees on it? I don't understand that. I, I support obeying this for 30 days, that's fine, but why are we obeying the first section when everybody agrees on it?
Thank you. Thank you, I tend to agree with you. I'd like to give them something so they can continue on. Obviously, they're open anyway. But if we've already agreed to it, I would tend to agree to that and obey the contentious part.
I'm going to vote no.
All right, and I also will be voting nay on that piece, as will Councilman Mayor Protem. So the motion is, at this point, just to repeat, was to obey the entire item. And correct me, Councilman Coffin, to January 30th, was that the date?
January 8th.
January 8th.
I just wanted to say, if I could...
Say.
Councilman Coffin, Coffin, I'm not against voting for A. I know that Mr. Barlow is, but I'm not against doing that part. But I understand his situation. I had just gone over it well enough for me. So I, I didn't know if that was influencing your motion or not. You said two people to your right.
It was, Your Honor. Thank you. Through you to Councilwoman Tarkanian, it really was influencing the motion. I didn't want two members of our council feeling so uncomfortable on this. We have not heard from the entire council, so you don't know how our motion's going to go. If the council's comfortable with a two-week delay, and if our staff can do this, that's a big, big deal, because it requires meeting time, it requires processing of paper, it requires getting it all ready and publishing a week from today, and then, you know, having briefings. If you feel that you can do it all, then I would withdraw the motion and submit another motion that would simply say, defer this until the 18th of December. But you've got to keep that in mind. I mean, I'm trying to be cognizant of our staff...
Your motion at this point, though, is to defer to the 8th.
Well, I can withdraw that easily.
Okay. The other question, and just to confirm, was we were, just to repeat what's been discussed here, A piece has been agreed to by both sides of this issue. It's the B part that is the issue that is causing real concern, especially for licensing, because you're trying to get afloat with everything else. And you have, just if you would restate, you have said you would do your best by the 18th, but you'd really prefer January.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the client will have to tell you, Ms. Roberts will have to tell you whether they are in support of option A, which are the things that I've outlined that we've been working on over the last two weeks. Staffs can support those items if they are in a package together, so not pieces of them. They, they change each dynamic.
So let's take that piece first.
That, that piece first.
Are we in agreement?
We are in agreement with option A, with the clarification I made on the record earlier, and with obeying for, until January 8th.
Well, let's take one piece first.
Okay. Yes, we, A is acceptable to us.
Agreed to.
Correct. With the correction that the beer and wine consumption area is during normal operating hours, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
All right.
I will have to restate the motion now.
Okay, so we have to withdraw. Do we just push withdraw vote? No, I can withdraw the motion. I just want to make sure Councilman Coffin puts it on the record. Thank you.
Yeah. Now, a new motion will be to approve this item, conditional as option A is outlined in detail to the council and evidenced in, you know, the minutes and the records of this meeting, with the balance, which would be option B in essence, deferred or obeyed until the January 8th council meeting.
Councilman Coffin, if you could slightly modify the second part and request that there be a review of condition three on January 8th instead of an abeyance.
And that there be a review of condition three on January 8th.
To address the items that are included in B.
To do that.
Okay. We have a motion. So let's please vote and please post. Councilman Beers?
He's deciding.
Are you still deciding? Do you want to coin?
Can we start over?
No.
Okay, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will see you back here in January on this.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, we'll all work into Ms. Duddleston, who's going to spend her holiday working on this online. Thank you. Happy holidays. Okay, that was Agenda 20, was that eight? Yeah, 28. We're now on to Agenda Item 29, Boards and Commissions for Possible Action Appointment or Reappointment of Members to the Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership (YNAP) Grant Review Board. Procedure for this board is appoint by city council. Department of Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Service recommends the following. Appointments, and these are adult representatives, Becky Skousen, Vicki Skillbred, Joe Mitchell, Gabrielle Newell, alternate. Youth representatives, and then Jenny Reyes, Geronimo, Alexa Millard, Kimberly Figueroa, and Benita Salazar as an alternate. Reappointments, adult representatives, Kimberly Reed, Deborah Reyes, Paula Zaire, David Alexander Lopez, Michelle Thaxton. Youth representatives, Brandon DeWitt, Queesi DeDavis, Carlos Rodriguez, and Zachary Shattler. and Zachary Shattler. And that will be my motion. So, there's a motion. Please vote and please post. The motion carries. Agenda Item 30, Possible Action, Historic Preservation Commission, Donald L. Hotchkiss, Jr., term expiration 9/19/2013, Patrick Clank, term expiration 12/31/2013, and Bob Stodall, term expiration 12/31/2013. All three members would like to be reappointed. Does anyone have an additional representation, a recommendation? Forget representation. Okay, that will be my motion then to reappoint. Please post. Please vote and please post. Great. Motion carries. On to 31, Recommending Committee, Bill Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number 201357. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Here we go. Reading the bill.
Bill Number 2013-57, in order to adopt by reference an updated version of Title 19 of the Municipal Code, known as the Unified Development Code, and to provide for other related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. And there's been a move for approval on Item 31. Please vote and please post. Carries, and let's move on to Agenda Item 32. Item 32, Bill 2013-60, eligible for adoption later meeting. There will be no new bill, so we move on to our planning items. And items, third, do we have anything here? Did you have anything on 33 through 35? Right, that's where we are, on the 33 through 35. And the consent agenda, considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Thank you, this motion. Please vote. And please post. And that motion carries. Agenda Item 36, the staff has had asked to have that stricken. Item 37 has been withdrawn without prejudice. And, let's see, 38. EOT 51700, nonconforming use, public hearing, applicant, Fifth Street Gaming LLC, owner 899 Fremont LLC, for possible action, request for extension of time for a nonconforming tavern at 899 Fremont Street. C2, general commercial zone, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. The staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. And is the applicant or representative present? And would you please say who you are? Thank you.
Hello, Dennis Gutwold, from the law firm at Brownstein Hyatt Farber &amp; Schrepp. With me is Joe Kane from Fifth Street Gaming. Their company is responsible for preserving the rights at that location. I wanted to take time to thank staff. Said this before, but it's been a while since I've been up here, but the planning department and licensing department, we worked on downtown Grand, bring a small-town fill to a big-city government and make this stuff fun to work with. So, I just wanted to thank them. We're, the request before you, we submitted an application for an extension of time dealing with both liquor and gaming. The liquor part is before you today. The gaming rights, we don't expect to expire till sometime in March. The Western's gaming license was surrendered back in March 2013, and that starts the clock ticking for that expiration. So, we're dealing with the liquor and gaming today, and we're ready to answer questions regarding it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody interested in making comment, please come forward. Hearing not now, close the public comment. Anyone, counsel?
Madam Mayor, if I might just put something on the record today. As the applicant has indicated, you have the application before you for the extension of their tavern use here on the property. One of the things that we have discussed and has been in question is relative to the preservation of their gaming rights on the property. I just want to indicate for the record that there was a two-day opening that was held December 31st of 2012 and January 1st of 2015. Typically, when you hold a two-day opening as such, that does preserve your land use rights for a period of two years. As Mr. Gutwold has indicated, they did surrender that license, however. Under the nonconforming section of our code, they have a year from the date of surrender of that license to reestablish that use. And so, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear on the record, that they have a year to reestablish the gaming use, and we will be working with the applicant as they go through that process.
So, that would be for January 15th?
Actually, they surrendered the license, I believe, in March of 2013, so they have through March of 2014 to reestablish their gaming rights.
That's our understanding as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if either one of you can answer this question, but rumor has it, there will be ice skating in that parking lot. Can you confirm or deny?
I don't know that. They won't tell me.
Counsel, good afternoon, Joe Kane, on behalf of Fifth Street Gaming. We work on behalf of the property owner, so I don't have those details. I can't confirm or deny that.
I'm just not prepared to vote on this till I know there's ice skating.
All I know is they do have some plans that they are, that they are working on, and the tentative date is late 2014, 15 for reappointment.
That's just a rumor I heard. I just want to give you.
He has time to practice. I will tell you, from what I understand, that the gold spike on their parking lot is already in process of having ice skating. That's what it was. Much easier to get to from here. You could just take your bike and then hop on the rink, which is under construction. So, all right, we have another vote for if there's ice skating, he's aficionado. So, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The staff has recommended approval. This is only the second extension of time, so I believe on the tavern use, we should be able to approve that. So, I move for approval of Item 38.
Thank you, this motion, please vote and please post. So, you have a message to take back, that Councilmen Ross would like to skate. Are you an ice hockey man?
No.
No.
I can fall down.
Okay. That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks again to planning.
Thank you. I will move on to Agenda Item 39, EOT 51760, nonconforming use, extension of time, public hearing, applicant, Golden Penny Industries LLC, owner, Spokes LLC, for possible action on a request for an extension of time of a nonconforming tavern at 3540 West Sahara, Suite E1, C1, limited commercial zone. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward 1. Staff recommends approval, and it is a public hearing, which we declare open. Is the applicant or representative present, please?
Yes.
Could you say your name for the record, please?
Good afternoon, my name is Sonia Choi with National Licensing Services, and to my left is the applicant, Mr. Jerome Kosak.
And would you repeat your name, sir?
Yes, my name is Jerome Kosak.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, Tim O'Reilly of the O'Reilly Law Group, present on behalf of the property owner, Spokes LLC.
Thank you. And Mr. Flynn Fag, would you have some comments to make on this?
This is the third request for an extension of time for a nonconforming tavern. Typically, staff would not recommend approval in these instances, however, the applicant is working towards tenant improvements, and I believe they have submitted an application for a license, since they are making progress on reestablishing the use. Staff has recommended approval.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the public before I ask Councilwoman Tarkanian? Is that hand up that you're ready to come forward? Are you here?
I'm sorry, public?
No, are you, on this, this is public hearing on this particular item, nothing?
I'm here, good morning. I just want money to have in my wallet.
Oh, no. No, no, not now, not now, later. Thank you, okay. Thank you, afterwards. And so, this is, I will close the public hearing at this point, and we will turn over to Councilwoman Tarkanian.
With most of these that have come through, that have asked for the third extension, I've gone along with it because of the economic situation we've been in. It would be the last extension, but the third, I would be fine to go along with. The question I have, however, is I have received no calls to my office negative to this item. Well, except when I got here today, I saw there were nine protests. So, I looked in the backup, and I couldn't find a single protest, and I'm just wondering if there were, if that was an error. I don't know why anybody, usually I don't have protests on this.
If the protests came in after the agenda closed, they would not be in the backup, and the numbers that we get on the sheet come from planning.
Come from where?
Planning Department.
Well, when would I ever see them? This has nothing to do with this, but when would I see them then? Before a vote, unless they're sent to us? I'm going to move for approval of this, and I'm going to move because I know that you are working and you're trying hard. We are coming through strong economic times, and besides that, I like your representative. That's a joke.
Very positive. There's a motion then. We have a motion. And please vote, and then please post.
My question on the protest was just that I tried to go through all of that and then sometimes call the protesters, and I had no idea.
They were emailed around to the departments after they came in, after the agenda closed.
They were emailed to our department, didn't see one. Okay, thank you.
And as you know, with emails, anybody can do anything. Send you a flood. Congratulations, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Reilly.
You know, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Yes. How nice for us, we're moving along in our neighborhood. Okay, Agenda Item 40, RQR 51408, public hearing, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner Craig 95 LLC, for possible action, required review of an approved special-use permit SUP 4694 for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 7075 West Craig Road, C1 Limited Commercial Zone. This is in Councilwoman Anthony's Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. It is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present, please?
Yes, Mayor, Jennifer Lazovich, 8345, here today representing Lamar. With me is also Scott Navasker, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Diane, would you step forward and say your name into the microphone for us, do you please?
Scott Navasker with Lamar Advertising, 1863 Helm Drive.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fag, anything on this?
Staff has recommended approval of this request with a five-year required review.
Okay. Now, based on the input from our attorney, Mr. Brian Scott, that lengthy report about, which was very interesting, about outdoor billboards, this is one of those that, in the neighborhood, it is that an extended five-year is exactly what you're recommending.
That's correct, and that's appropriate. If it's made, if the termination is made at a later date after the five-year period ends, that the neighborhood has changed to such a degree that the billboard could be removed, it would be, or you could require it to be removed. But if the status quo remains after five years, you can continue to have another review after five years.
Great, thank you. That was a very helpful report, by the way. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Do we want to hear from anyone? On this item, on Agenda Item 40. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. This is on 40. We're still on Agenda 40 billboard. So, counsel...
I'm sorry, mayor, should we?
You have to come up to the microphone, state your name, and it has to be on Agenda Item 40. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, closing the public hearing, and Councilman Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular billboard is, it's in a, it's at Craig 95. It's a huge commercial area. Nothing's going to change there. It doesn't impact the neighbors. I talked to Brian, and it seems kind of silly to come back in five years. So, I want to make a motion, Flynn, to make this a 10-year review. So, I'll approve this with a 10-year review. That's my motion.
Thank you.
Wow. Wow. There's a motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you. All right, Agenda Item 41, RQR 51409, public hearing, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner GGP Meadows Mall LLC, for possible action, required review of an approved special-use permit SUP 4809 for a 40-foot-tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign, 4120 Meadows Lane, C1 Limited Zone Commercial, and this is in Ward 1 of Councilwoman Tarkanian. The staff recommends approval. It is a public hearing. I declare it open. And again, if you would repeat your name.
Scott Navasker, Lamar Advertising, 1863 Helm Drive.
Okay.
We accept staff's conditions and ask for your approval.
Thank you. And Mr. Fag, on this one, please.
The staff is recommending approval of this required review with a three-year time period for the review, because it is located in redevelopment area number two, and that would be my comment for the following item as well, which is also on the Meadows Mall site.
Okay, and also Lamar. Okay, I see that. Okay, public hearing, anyone wishing to come forward on Agenda Item 41? Close the public hearing, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I would move to approve Item Number 41 with a three-year stipulation for review.
Thank you, there's a motion with a three-year review. Thank you. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. On an average, what does, you rent these by the month or by the six-month? What is it?
Usually monthly.
Monthly.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lease.
Standard rate, not special rate. What's a standard rate on a standard billboard? I know location makes a difference too in cost, but an average billboard in an average place, what is the monthly cost?
Do you mean what we sell them to an advertiser for, or what we lease the land?
I want to go ahead and advertise some, my store, which I don't have. Generally, just in a general location, nothing specific, what does it cost a month?
Maybe a thousand bucks, but that could go anywhere from 500 to 25,000, just depends on where.
Well, I know location has a lot to do with it and everything else, but just curious. Okay, anyone wishing to be heard on this item? I don't know if I said that, but seeing no one here, coming forward on 41, we'll close the public hearing, and Councilwoman.
I did have a protest on these two items, and I just wanted to recognize it, because it was good that the individual, even though he feels it's hopeless, did send in a card. And if he's watching, I would like him to know that it is true that once these billboards are approved, it is difficult to remove them. So, he sent in the card, and he made the effort as a citizen, and I appreciate that, respect that. But I move for approval on Item Number 42, a three-year extension.
41.
Oh, excuse me.
Well, oh, we did 41, you're right, sorry.
42.
I'm holding it, 42, sorry.
Item Number 42 with three-year extension.
Perfect. Does motion, please vote and please, oops.
Mayor, there'd be a three-year review.
She did say three-year.
She said extension.
I said extension, I'm sorry. I meant to say review.
Three-year review.
I take back that word.
Learn every day. All right, there was a motion with a three-year review. And please vote. And post, there we go. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Thank you, we look forward to your signage. Okay, I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance lit or abatement. Thank you very much. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of time of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come forward, and we will set the time at three minutes. Your microphone's not on.
Push the button.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Margaret Coleman, and again, I'm here to address you all concerning my issue of money created and due from a court order. The reasons that I... The reasons that I believe that you're here is because of my injury on my job at the Golden Nugget. That brings this point, that brings this point to this level that my work missed compensation is very important for me to collect. They have changed this town into a movie production. And to point out the wrongdoers of my case, there has been the Pelican brief, there has been separate but equal, there has been Cindy Comer that created herself a tape for cross-stitching, Tom Connors that have taken my tax refund. Now he's trying to take my equal rights of my Fourteenth Amendment to drive here in Nevada. I'm considered as probably to be placed on the X file due to the fact my court order has not risen to be paid and should have been paid because it is a court order that was honored and issued by a chief judicial judge of the district court. And it should have been paid long before now, nineteen of eighty to nineteen thirteen, I mean, two thousand and thirteen. That it is long overdue. And I feel as though that I should be recognized, but I'm tired, I'm sixty-one, I'm running out of breath trying to convince you all that I am of importance and I could be of importance due to my duties to the community to probably open up business doors with the money, not take it and just throw it on drugs and buy pills and, you know, take advantage of the population. If I issued my money out, it would not be just to my friends or my constituents that you all have done, that I have recognized, because I don't fit in on your group, I don't fit in on your seats. Three billion and three million dollars, I should have had a seat to make decisions upon the money in which you all gave from two thousand and one to two thousand and nine, that I have recognized, one point five million dollars that was put into the general fundings. Now, in your meeting today, you stated...
Thank you. I'm sorry, I wish we could give you longer time, but we cannot.
Well, anyway, my name is Margaret Coleman and I plan on moving forward. I no longer will come here, I will start going to the city, I mean, the state of Nevada to continue this issue of my court order.
Thank you. Okay, next, please. Hello?
Hello? My name is Catherine Burbano.
There you go, there you go, let's start again.
Hello, everybody, my name is Catherine Burbano. This is my first visit here. And as far as your whole council, I am truly disappointed as a twenty-five-year-old. Very unprofessional. I think your subject matters, that you were bringing up to a naive girl like me who has no idea what's going on. I didn't even know I was able to vote for you. I don't even recall when the last time they gave me the opportunity to welcome me here as an eighteen-year-old and let me know, if you guys want to come to a meeting, you know, at the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, to go vote for the council members, you are more than welcome to come. And that was my opinion, I must apologize. I appreciate people trying to assist me or whatnot, but there are people who don't comprehend everything. You were moving quite quick, you know, too fast through the slideshow. Mind you, I am a high school graduate, I am competent, okay? And there are people who can't even read as fast as I can and multitask as, you know, fast as I can. And I'm just quite, I'm just pretty disappointed at the subject matters you brought up because nowhere was there anything about education. And nor did you ever mention anything about Obama or the situations as far as where, you know, how much do, does our state consumer, within the general fund expenditure, how much does Obama give to each state or is it the size or population? I just want to know what you guys are doing with the budget, that's all.
Okay, well, certainly we welcome the fact that you have come before us and appreciated. I will tell you that what we do here at city council and our job is to make sure that we are monitoring what's going on within the city. What President Obama is doing for us, with us, and whether we have grants that are going out, most of the information, in fact, all of the information you can access online. And I think what you could do is, like these gentlemen that are here, they come frequently to our meetings to learn and to give input back to us. So it's a whole learning experience and we do not have time today to go into it. Our job is to monitor, take care of, and have a healthy and safe city. And our obligation in the different six wards, which is a hundred and thirty-five square miles here, take care of our constituents. Education is very much on our radar, we spend an awful lot of time.
Actually, sorry to interrupt Mayor Goodman, but it seems like you, the majority of the pie chart showed the LVMPD. Like, well, how much security and how much protection did you guys really need to spend that much money on? Because when I was looking at the proportion, it just didn't quite make sense to me as why you would spend that much on, or, you know, how come the budget is going towards city jail and metro when you don't even need that much? Because did you know I've actually been locked up?
We have a lot of issues in safety and we do, it's just, I wish I could refer you specifically to somebody where she can get the information and answer to these questions.
As a citizen, I am worried about my safety. I'm a twenty-five-year-old mother, single mother of two children, and I don't always feel like I am quite safe. And when there, pardon? Did you just interrupt? I'm sorry, Mayor Goodman. Is there something you guys want to discuss during a matter of the public? That this was not your subject? Like, this was not your time? This is my time, three minutes, it's a long time.
Your Honor?
Councilman?
There's a time limit on, there's a time limit on public comment.
I apologize.
That's what just happened, no, that's fine.
I apologize.
May I suggest, since you've waited here for most of the day?
Yes.
If you could, like, log another twenty minutes, we're about to be finished. And my staff and I would be happy to sit down with you out here in the room and discuss some of the questions that you have.
I would love that.
It is a process of education about how government works.
I understand. I have some colleagues, but I just don't...
It sounds like, no, but this is different. And you're on day one, you're on, like, first day one-on-one?
Exactly.
I'll get you for your first two weeks in twenty minutes.
I appreciate that, Councilman Beers, because I want to educate peers that are my age, because we have no idea what's going on, and we want to be what you guys are. We want to be there making decisions too.
Well, we're spending your children's money.
Spending children's money?
Yes, generally, that's what we...
Why would you say something like that?
Because we, the federal government borrows money that it can't ever repay, so your children are going to pay it back. But we'll talk about it.
I think the most important thing, it's admirable. I think getting books, getting books from the library on government, and specifically city government in our community, and learning as much as you can, you will understand better some of the issues with which we deal on a daily basis. And I will tell you, we're terribly concerned about our constituents, we want them safe, we also want them well-educated. So while you say your age group doesn't understand, I hate to differ with you, there are an awful lot in your age group, thank heavens, that do understand.
Because you make us feel unwelcome.
And just, it's learning. So what, you've had a wonderful suggestion, and I think that's very nice of Councilman Beers to offer his staff for this.
May I ask one last question?
One brief question, because you're over the limit and we may have other comments.
Okay, the debt service, I have not offered one debt service to basically consolidate my debt and remove it and take it away for life. So I just wanted to know, how come a bit of the pie chart showed, you know, a good...
It's historical, the debt we have encountered, and he will cover it.
We'll cover that specific thing.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, hi, Mayor Goodman. I apologize, I didn't mean to be...
If I could, I just want to add to you, Ms., I just wanted to add to you that we do an awful lot in working with the other entities, the school district that's responsible for education. We just had a big meeting this morning before we started our regular meeting, and we are doing this all the time in the city. So if you have any questions about education, I'd be glad to help you in that, you could contact my office.
Because I didn't finish school, but I know just as much or more that you guys can even answer. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, please, next, thank you.
Yeah, hi, Mayor, Madam Councilman, gentleman...
And of course, your name, please.
Monica Volt.
Again, Catherine Burbano, thank you.
Ma'am?
I'm here to talk about the sewer bill.
Okay, but could you state your name again? I'm sorry, we didn't hear it.
Monica Volt.
Thank you.
The sewer bill is based on the households. Every household pays the same, exactly the same thing, but in some household, it's like five to eight people, and they're using like ten times, hundred times more water than I am, and I'm the only one. And they, they use, they paying exactly same thing for the sewers. I think the sewer bill should be based on how much water you use. My water bill for two thousand and eight was two hundred, two dollars, that's per year. Two thousand and nine, one twenty-one per year. Two thousand and ten, one thirteen per year. Last bill was only seventeen dollars, that's with all the other stuff that is included. And I think the, I was here before talking to Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor say that they're going to, the council going to be working with the city, with the Valley Water Service, and they're going to do something and nothing been done, and I think that's wrong. I mean, I have to pay exactly same thing what people would eight, five or eight people in a household.
Who can address this, please, on the sewer? Mr. Adams, can, ah, Mr. Cervantes here, and he can help you understand why the bills and how they're rated. And so this is Mr. Jorge Cervantes, who's the head of our community development, Public Services. So excuse me one second. Please.
For the record, Jorge Cervantes, she is correct, our sewer bill for residential is a flat rate. Just recently, we completed a rate study to see if the rates were proper and to look at a consumption-based fee. What we found was that a consumption-based fee for the city of Las Vegas would be difficult to manage because we're not a water purveyor. So we don't know how much water's going out versus how much water is being utilized. Certain cities that are both a water purveyor and a wastewater treatment do have rates that are based on consumption. We don't have that ability because we don't provide the water service.
And same would be with the county?
The county's correct, a flat fee, they're not a water purveyor.
Flat fee. So it has to do with water, and that's what I've learned today, both on the TV and on social ware and in the newspaper, water rates are going up as well.
Yeah, I know that, but, you know, the sewer bill should be based, how many gallons of water goes into the sewer?
Well, and I think that's what he was just saying, they did a study and it looked like there was some agreement there, but because of the water issue, the flat rate is the only way, and that's true, and all of sudden, is that true throughout the state as well?
Mayor, I'm not sure if somebody understood, I know that North Las Vegas and Henderson are both water purveyors and wastewater, so they may structure differently. The county and I, because we don't have the ability to trace the waters being consumed, we do it on a flat fee.
Okay.
You know, it isn't right for me to pay for the people that using hundred times more water than I do.
Yeah, I think you're reasonable.
Yeah, thank you. Merry Christmas and happy new year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming down and saying that, because we'd like to have that on record from our constituents. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. There's been a lot of stuff on the paper about Detroit there. Can you tell us roundabout, are we fully funded on our pension plans? I don't think we are, but how close are we? Does anyone know?
I think...
Are we safe? This is, okay, let me put it, are we okay? Are we safe?
Mr. Adams, how about talking about the pension plans?
This is one of those cases where I wish Mark were here. I think, I'm, I really hate to take, to even take a guess, I think we're somewhere around seventy percent funded, the state in Nevada. I just read, actually cracked open a report yesterday that compared plans from state to state. And it's a complicated subject because it, the unfunded liability really represents that which would have to be paid out if everybody retired all at one time. So they, they do very complicated actuarial studies that look at what's required to fund, fully fund pensions, and from my perspective, from our perspective, we believe we're safe and that the pension system is sound.
And two, as we all are living longer, retirement outgo is longer. But Councilman Beers, I know you have something Israeli...
The thing I say this is because Detroit says that this is opening up a whole can of worms and a lot of cities are way behind, so...
So I was waiting for Bob Goffin to respond, because he actually had more time in the legislature than I did. And the legislature is who is most directly responsible for the statewide public employees' retirement system, PERS. There is a PERS board that meets and focuses in quite strongly on PERS. That's its direct governance structure, and Mark serves on that PERS board. PERS in general is between sixty-six and seventy percent funded. That is a pretty speculative number, as any number guy would tell you, because you're talking about two different actuarial thoughts here. One is, we know we have this much in assets today, what would that look like in thirty years? Well, it depends on what your return is, so you have to make an assumed return, that's pretty risky. As well, on the payout side, you have to make a estimate of what the payout's going to be for the history of all time, which is very difficult to do, because today, I'll bet, somewhere in the state, a public employee retired, and probably tomorrow one will be hired. So you've got this constant moving matrix, big calculations, but the best the PERS boards have been able to do is hire the actuary that they have, actuaries actually, multiple, and currently they think that it's sixty-six to seventy percent funded. So compared to, for example, Detroit, which was forty percent, according to one report I read.
Would this influence our bonding capacity? No.
It's not recognized in governmental accounting, that liability, the unfunded piece is not recognized under government accounting. No one knows, except the bond raters, what exactly they're looking at, whether they look beyond our financial statements to our liability. The research I have read, which was prepared by the Legislative Council Bureau and is a couple of years old, at seventy percent, we are near the top.
Oh, super, thank you. I think Betsy, by the way, I think Betsy and the staff does a great job, wonderful job, because I was here years ago, back in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, they were saying, you know, we need to get our house in order before the disaster hit, and it's a good thing we did, thank you.
And let me add, I wish...
Thank you.
I wish Mark was here, too.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to add that I believe every state that owes money, and I believe that we also owe money. But you're right, we're one of the better ones. California's one of the worst ones, at the amount of money. If all that money were called in today or something like that, we'd be in a terrible mess. As someone whose husband does get that as a pension, I will tell you that it's a little scary when you read the things sometimes, but so far Nevada has stayed strong.
And when you look at other cities, I know, remember, a couple of years back, going to Chicago, and their PERS, they were retiring at ninety to ninety-five percent of their salaries. And so they were in huge, huge problematic times. So, you know, I think it depends, and hopefully we are safe and sound, but keep an eye on it for us. Yes, sir?
My name is Anthony Hottis. I want to speak a couple of minutes on the violence against women and children. And there's a famous lady, that's a movie star, her name is Farrah Fawcett, she's dead, but Ryan O'Neal is a movie star man. He used to beat her when she was living. I hate to see men beating on women, but he used to beat her when she was living, now he wants to control her estate from the grave. And so that's why I speak, the reason I'm speaking on her particularly, because me, I met that lady many years ago, and me and my daughter kind of played with her long golden hair and whatever. The objective is, is that violence against women, it bothers me all my life, I hate that kind of stuff. But anyway, this man is trying to control the lady's estate from the grave, so I thought maybe I'd bring that up. Ryan O'Neal needs to be somewhere, you know, give him a dose of his own medicine once in a while. But anyway, I think that's horrible for what he's trying to do. He beat her when she was living, now he kind of controlled her from the grave, and I can't stand that. And I hate violence against women and children, period. Have a good day, I love you.
Okay, we will now, anyone else wishing to be heard? All right, hearing done. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by city council unless that subject's on the agenda... will not be acted upon by city council unless that subject's on the agenda scheduled for action. Councilman Coffin said that for this portion, he had no announcements. We'll start with you, Councilman Barlow, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we will have an opportunity to celebrate the annual Ward Five Christmas tree lighting ceremony, taking place out at Lorenzi Park, starting at 5:30, so please come out. This is to celebrate all of the young people in our community who unfortunately go throughout the holiday without a Christmas tree, and so this is our way of providing our young people in the community a Christmas tree to celebrate the Christmas holiday and the Christmas season. And so that will be taking place tonight at 5:30 at Lorenzi Park, located near the corner of Washington and Rancho. Also, on tomorrow, December 5th, please join me for Coffee with the Councilmen at Starbucks, located at 751 Rancho and Bonanza. You'll have an opportunity to come out and celebrate with me for the holiday, as we talk about the business of the upcoming New Year. And that's Coffee with the Councilmen tomorrow. And in addition to that, we have the Bluegrass in the Park taking place every, or I should say, the first Sunday of every month, and the next, Bluegrass in the Park will take place Sunday, December 8th, from 1:00 p.m. until 3:00 p.m. So please come out and enjoy music of local bluegrass bands playing traditional American music with banjos, fiddles, guitars, and mandolins. This is a free event, which the entire family is invited to come out, so please visit my website at www.lasvegasnevada.gov/wardfive. And you can also follow me on Facebook and Twitter. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. What I was hopeful, and thank you for coming back, Mr. Cervantes, about the Project Neon meeting that's going to be taking place at the Fifth Street School, could you just update everybody when that meeting is and what will be, information will be given? Thank you.
Certainly, Mayor. There's a public meeting tonight from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Fifth Street School and Project Neon. What they're going to do is they're going to give the latest information on the project itself, as far as what the roadway configurations are, what the impacts to adjacent properties are, and then the facing, how they plan to build it. As I reported before, they're going to do it through a public-private partnership, allowing them to do a lot more in shorter time and a faster time. And so this meeting will present those, the latest information on that from 4:00 to 7:00 in an open forum. Now, at 5:30, there'll be a formal presentation, and so they'll talk about the product, explain it, and it'll open up to any questions. And between 4:00 and 7:00, they'll have the exhibits and personnel there to answer any questions.
Thank you. I just thought it was very important for those who are watching, or anybody that's here still that's interested in what Project Neon's going to fold out, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Long day for you, I know. Councilwoman.
Councilman Beers and I will be working this Saturday. He'll be doing the hard work. He's riding a bike across town. And the county, Susie Brigger, is going to distribute some water, and we're going to distribute tot chocolate and candy canes, and we are doing this all for charity, for toys for children at Christmas, children who don't have much toys. And on December 13th, we will be active in You Drink, You Drive, You Lose at the UMC Trauma Center parking lot, where they'll be having education, trying to help youngsters who are starting to drive know some of the rules, know how important it is to drive safely, know how important it is not to drink while driving. And then on the 16th of Monday, we're going to have three holiday meals in a row at our senior centers. Clark Towers will be there, James Down Towers will be there at 2:00. Clark Towers is at 11:30. And then that night, we have our big holiday event. It's Toys for Tots. We work with the police on that, and it's at the Clark High School gym, and we'll have toys there for youngsters and also educational material.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Perotan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite everyone to the Ward Four Holiday Movie. We'll be showing Christmas with the Cranks. It's a free event, free raffle prizes. It will be Friday, December 6th, at 6:30 p.m. It's going to be indoors at the Drangle Hills Community Center at 3521 North Durango. So you don't have to worry about the 40-degree high and the 20-degree low. Come on out, it's, everyone's invited, bring a, no, you don't have to bring a blanket, just bring a chair. And we'll have some, some light refreshments there, but it's a great way to meet people that live in Las Vegas, watch a fun movie, Christmas with the Cranks, Friday, December 6th, 6:30 p.m., Drangle Hills Community Center at Durango and Cheyenne. So hope to see you there.
Popcorn?
Yes, popcorn and some other refreshments.
Wonderful. That's it. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I must say to our council members, through the mayor, of course, all of us at this time of year, and actually, every time of year, when school starts, we have a holiday or anything like that, we all have these great events. There's no reason anyone in this city should be left out of the holidays and some of the wonderful traditions. And speaking of traditions, I've got a tradition as well, the Cowboy Christmas. Our annual Cowboy Christmas is here at Tulley Springs Park, Floydland Park at Tulley Springs, Saturday, December 7th, that's this Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. And it is free, let me reemphasize, that's free. We've got some great singing singers coming out from Arbor View, Shatterhead, Centennial, Caldwell, some junior high schools. We've got a massive car show going on. There will be photos with Santa, probably the biggest priority. Hay rides, petting zoo, you can ride a horse, you can ride a wagon, we've got the farmer's market. It is a great time for all, and it will be cold, and it will be free.
Will we have a Grinch?
No, we're not going to see the Grinch this year, Mayor. I tried and put a special request in.
I'm not coming.
No.
Unless the Grinch is there, I'm not coming.
He chose to share his Grinch-ness elsewhere this year.
No ice fishing?
And there may be, Councilman Beers, there may be ice fishing at Tulley Springs this Saturday.
I do have to mention, at my holiday movie, we will have the Grinch there, and you can have picture taken of the Grinch.
Ah, okay.
So just wanted to throw that in there.
That's important. That's important, because the Grinch was a great addition to all of our holiday events. So I want to thank him for being there. Next wonderful event, we're doing something a little different here at the City of Las Vegas. You can join me for a Twitter chat about what's going on, about construction projects in Ward Six, or what's just going on in Ward Six in general. The hashtag is #LVWardSixChat. It will be Tuesday, the 17th, from 2:00 to 3:00. So you have a whole hour to test my skills on Twitter, and that's going to be a challenge for me to begin with. But I invite everybody who wants to know what's happening in Ward Six, not just about construction projects, and by the way, that's not a likeness of me with my cowboy hat on, in Ward Six. Again, #LVWardSixChat, Tuesday, December 17th, 2:00 to 3:00, and then the handles for the City of Las Vegas, @CityLasVegas, and of course, @SteveRossLV. Now, on a more serious note, Mayor and council members, our continued partnership with Nevada Child Seekers, we do have a missing young lady we'd love to get home for the holidays. This is Alexis Sanchez, Alexis Elena Sanchez. Lexi is a 15-year-old young lady. She's 5'4", 140 pounds, she's got brown hair, brown skin. She was last seen in the area of Durango and Farm Road out by me. So if, it's unknown what she was wearing when she was last seen, but she may be carrying a backpack with her personal belongings. Lexi does have a tattoo of a star on her shoulder and piercings on her bottom lip. If you have any information, please contact Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, 828-3111, or Nevada Child Seekers, 702-458-7009. And Mayor and council members, a good story, as we do these missing children at our city council meetings, I did get a report a couple of weeks ago at one of our council meetings last month, there were some kids and students and teachers that actually recognized the young lady that we highlighted, and they did relocate her and get her the help that they need. Now, sometimes when I say the help that they need, it's not always getting them back to their family is the help that they need, it may be some other kind of help that they need. But we do this on a continuous basis, and if you've seen this young lady, please notify the authorities and let's get her where she needs to be. Thank you, Mayor and Councilman.
And if you're listening, Lexi, do reach out for help, call Metro.
Or Nevada Child Seekers.
Or Nevada Child Seekers. Thank you. Okay, Councilman Beers.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I would like to introduce to you all Kyle Warner. I think you can actually see him, we have a little screen here.
Stand up for us, Kyle Warner.
And Kyle Warner is a senior at West Tech Academy and has interned with the Ward Two office for the last couple, two or three months now. And sat with us during the meeting today. It was, this is a big day. I don't know if we all realize it, it's not just the first day of real cold weather. This is, this is the anniversary of Elvis Presley dropping in on Carl Perkins, Jerry Lee Lewis, and Johnny Cash to record a jam session at Sun Records Star, now owned by RCA, and turned in eventually to the Million Dollar Quartet, which has had a long, quite nice run here in Las Vegas. And so this is the day of that event immortalized in the Million Dollar Quartet. Kind of cool, music history. And then we're going to have the Festival of Lights at the Lakes, not this weekend, but the next weekend. That'll be from noon to 6:00, and if you've never been, it's really a fun show, huge event. You've got a car show going on, a craft show, pony rides, petting zoo, and then when the sun goes down, the folks that live out on the lakes at Durango and Sahara have little boats, which they decorate in all kinds of lights, and it's just really cool. They do a parade of lights out on the lake with their boats, and it's really a neat event. So the details on your screen, encourage you all to come out and visit. That's all we've got here in Ward Two.
I know Oscar and I went many times and rode in a couple of the boats. It's just, it's magnificent. You just feel you're light years away.
It's cool.
It's magical. It really is. And I remember when Clint Holmes first came here to town, he was part of one of the festivals. It was great. So I dare not forget, does our attorney wish to have any comments?
No.
No, okay. There's no party you want to go to?
Put it in the spot.
No, we wore him out today. All right, this Thursday, December 5th, that's tomorrow, it's a big day in Las Vegas. At 10:00 a.m., we will celebrate the grand opening of the Container Park, which we've been talking about today. You won't want to miss this innovative new shopping and entertainment complex on East Fremont Street. Bring the family and see how fabulous downtown continues to evolve into something spectacular. That same night, tomorrow night, the city will be launching, as I mentioned before, the new free Wi-Fi network downtown, and again, to sign up to be part of our social media scavenger hunt. We'll start at the Art Bar at the new Downtown Grand at 6:00 p.m. Teams of two to six people may test their downtown Las Vegas knowledge. Proceeds will go to benefit the Animal Foundation. LasVegas.net will offer a dollar donation, up to 500, to the Animal Foundation every time the DT Wi-Fi hashtag is used throughout the event. Also downtown, Thursday night, the Mob Museum is celebrating Repeal Day with a series of fun-filled events. What Repeal Day is, celebrating the repeal of prohibition, which outlawed alcohol.
We're celebrating.
At the Mob Museum with my husband, the former mayor, Oscar Goodman, at 5:30, for a free toast to the end of prohibition. It's perfect for my husband. Roaring twenties area attire is encouraged, so dig out your fedora and beads. And for more information, go to the museum website at themobmuseum.org. Rounding out Thursday's festivities, Las Vegas is pleased to welcome rodeo fans from across the nation to the opening of the National Finals Rodeo, which will be at the Thomas and Mack Center. From December 5th through December 14th, Las Vegas celebrates Western culture and competition with hundreds of parties, events, activities, and great, great rodeo showmanship. Don't miss the chance to be part of this. Saturday, the 7th, approximately 15,000 Santas will participate in our ninth annual Great Santa Run benefiting Opportunity Village. Wear your favorite red suit and beard and join us for a 5K run or a one-mile walk. Registration begins at 7:00 a.m. with a 10:00 start. For more information, visit the website, lasvegassantarun.org. Please join us downtown on Wednesday, the 11th, at 5:00 p.m., when I will officially light the city's Christmas tree on Fremont Street. Holiday festivities will take place on the Third Street stage at Fremont. Make a night of it and visit our lovely new hotels and gathering spots while we get into the holiday spirit. Our very next city council meeting will be held at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, the 18th, here in City Council. And with that, we will adjourn our council.
Wait, Mayor, please don't adjourn, let me say one last thing.
We're not adjourned, we're holding on for Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something that pertains to the entire council members, and I'm assuming that you received an email from Hyde Park Middle School about their Nevada State qualifying tournament in robotics. They're going to have 29 middle school and high school teams from all over the Las Vegas Valley, so there'll be some from your areas. They would like you, if you could, just to stop and show support and, for the academics that's going on there, and that's going to be from 9:00 to 5:00 at Hyde Park Middle School. There's, the Hyde Park group is a multi-award-winning, three-time world championship qualifying classroom, and they want to show you their VEX robotics program and the students they have enrolled there, and they're saying, come on out and see all these teams from private schools, out-of-state schools, and let them know that the city council does support education.